Yep.
Good morning, welcome to Steel County Commission Meeting, it's eight oh one, June first. Start out following the meeting's order. Do we have any additions to agenda? No additions?
Yes, our lease lock transfer. It's on one, but it's not on yours. We have a lease lock.
Any other additions? Okay, we'll move to approval of minutes.
Show move.
I'll second.
Motion made by ten, second by Brandon, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, motion carried. Uh, we'll go to the lights.
Update on the lighting project. We, it bill last, you guys approved the bill at the last month's meeting. Russell has met with Tyler regarding the flickering issues. And gave an, you gave him account of pulling and where are we at with that?
It's up to Tyler now, too.
Yeah, I think we'll, what all I'm doing is we'll swap the ball, we probably have bad cases maybe that are flickering. So I'm actually gonna sw, we're gonna swap and ball, I might even try just a different vendor even. So my other supplier has a different vendor than. So I think which, now that seemed like he narrowed it down, or kind of. Then we ball for case small, we'll come in and swap and ball and see if that. If that works.
So we've narrowed it down to the, to the bulbs?
I guess, I also was the bulbs, we wouldn't, we tightened whatever connection in the panel and everything that we could have. And it's just weird that it's like giving a certain area, because we did all this area one time, or we feel like we probably got about a couple cases. Because I feel like if there was any other issue, it'd be going on throughout the whole four bulbs. But if it was just a one area, that's what I could come up with, so try that, see where we end up.
Okay, when do you think it would be doing that?
All we're doing today, I don't know, it's been kind of hard getting some of the bulbs, but as soon as we can, we'll come in.
Well, the issue was, is the blinking and was so bad that the. Charlie and Amy and Emily had to turn their lights off because it was so bad. And they were getting headaches from the lights blinking and stuff, so that's the issue we brought up to Tyler and stuff, so.
Okay.
Um, as far as the grant goes, Ben put in the paperwork for the reimbursement of the lighting grant itself. We have been reimbursed by the state for that half, so. Update on the financial part of it.
Okay, do you have anything else, Taylor?
Just, these are some things for that washing machine I had done. And all because, you know, it said something about, she had talked about I had a washing machine down in the basement or something. So, so I know that, and then I gave some data on the generator, which is.
Okay.
All of those light bulbs, and then, yeah, we'll just come. Where we get them, we'll come here, so, see what ends up there.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
What was the, on that grant, remember, Ben?
One thousand three colors and some change, so it was in forty-five hundred, forty-five oh one fifty, I think, to look at. Versus.
Any other questions on the lighting? Thank you, Amy. Golden Lake raffle permit, Golden Lake, um, every summer submits a permit for their raffles out there. They're not doing the normal ticketing raffle, where you purchase the tickets. What is it, do you know?
Calendars?
Well, I think they were just doing a weekly drawings, they're not doing that this year?
They're doing it different, it's not their normal. Normal raffle they do. Um, she has on here, it's a raffle and raffle board.
Hmm, I thought they, that's how they usually did a raffle board.
Did they usually do more than that, to my brain?
Used to be a calendar thing, didn't it?
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
It, uh, funds improvements to the pavilion electrical system, the walking path fence, et cetera.
They also have, uh, prizes on here, too, so must be different. TV, griddle. That was. Motion to approve.
Motion made by Brian, second.
Show move.
Second by Russell, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carried. County liability coverage.
Uh, July is the renewal of our liability coverage. And, uh, Ivoryce has been working on updating and giving us the amount for the renewal of our quality. We currently have a two million dollar liability limit. Currently, I don't know if you guys are, I wanted to review that with you, and so did Shane, um, to see your thoughts on if that was enough. Coverage? Or not, um, he did give some quotes on, um, changing that, increasing it, whatnot. Don't know if you guys have any questions on that?
How long has it been, too many, and I thought we just changed that recently?
No.
Maybe that was the city that did that, then.
You thought we opted, Brian?
Yeah.
I just think in this day and age, two million really isn't a lot.
Not. That's nothing.
For liability, and this is. This is both for, um. Our general liability and our business auto liability, so. You know, the, the cost isn't significant to increase it. I, I think it's worth it personally.
How much is the difference?
Uh, here's your amounts.
Well, it looks like the.
So to increase it, right now we're at two million, it's thirty-two thousand four forty-two. To increase it to four million, it would be thirty-three nine twenty-five. So about fifteen hundred dollars to increase it by two million dollars.
That's kind of a no brainer.
I think that four million is more reasonable. Um, but.
What did Shane, Shane recommend?
I asked him for his input, and he didn't really say one way or the other.
Okay.
I don't know if they can't, or, I, I don't know.
You know, a lot of businesses are, used to be a million bucks, but that's just not enough anymore. I know mine, I'm at ten million, so you'd think a county would be two to four anyways.
What do other counties around the state do?
You think of all the, yeah, like you, with all your vehicles that you have out and about, even with the county.
You know, an accident, I mean, two million dollars is nothing.
Yeah, it's, you're right, it, it isn't.
The Tony, the Twitter had that fire down, down themselves, uh, they were way undercover. Uh, covering some respirators on replacement, on, on leasing a machine and stuff like that. Uh, you know, so that they could keep operating, but they were in a market for pay. Uh, that way, I don't know if there's something that, uh, that a guy can get for rental on machines, like if our shop was to burn down with all the machines in there. So that there is something, so that the guy. I don't know, but, uh, that's what I had heard, that they, because they lost. Like four machines, plus some trucks and stuff, and they didn't have, they didn't have the. Uh, they had to replace the cost, but didn't have the rental to keep going on, uh, getting, so, maybe that's something. The guy can go get through this.
Well, actually, those should be visited every year, every aspect of that, we do that in our business every year. So I say, even if we rent a machine ourself, we have like a mill dollar coverage just for a machine. It's all what you add on, your policy, the commercial, I mean, the liability, though we're talking about two to four million, that wouldn't change any of that. That's just the general liability, we would have to. Go through it individually on all that other stuff. That probably should be updated, who knows, I don't, since I've been on board, we've never done any of that. Richard? So maybe it'd be good for somebody to meet with Shane. Go through some of that, create some values corrected.
Can you guys hear me, this is Charlie?
But we should also update her.
We did in, what, two years ago, we did update all of our items with them, and what we do have covered, the buildings, all of that.
Yeah, we just did that.
Right. We made sure all the things in Golden Lake, all the, you know, different things out there were on there. The important part of it, and I don't think the offices all quite knew at the time, but. Them updating their inventory is actually a large part of us having accurate coverage. So if they have old items on there from twenty years ago, or ten years ago, and they just sign off on their inventory every. Quarter, then, you know, the insurance doesn't get updated, we don't have proper coverage. So we do push the inventory equipment, and I don't always see them linking correlation, but. We did go through it all, two years ago, when Ken was still there, and currently was starting. Up to date as far as that goes, there's many other aspects you want to still look at?
Well, like his department too, with the equipment, I think we should look at some of that stuff. Make sure we're covered.
Richard, can you guys hear me?
Okay.
So we're looking for a motion right now to.
The liability.
Liability.
Show move.
What do you want to raise it to?
Raise it to the four million or three million, whatever.
We're looking at two and oh to four.
Let's go to four, yeah.
Go to four.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Russell, second by Ted, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, motion carried. Okay, recovery funding?
So, I don't know if you guys have seen, um, TV or whatnot, the, um, different costs of money going out to. State and local entities for the recovery fund, um, COVID recovery efforts going out. Steel County, um, is down to receive the three hundred and sixty-seven thousand one hundred and ten. It will come in two different, once it's requested, which is a process I go through to. Get into the treasury and have to put a secondary person and get approval, request our funding, it will come in two different payment installments, the first half. Um, then would be the one thousand, or hundred and eighty-three thousand five fifty-five. Um, there are specific purposes and, and allowable expenses to use this for, and it will be tracked. The first quarterly report is due this fall on that, I briefly spoke with Ben a bit about it, on his ideas. Um, I would like to go over some thoughts or ideas with you guys, I don't know if you have any projects in mind. As far as the public health stuff, um, you know, and combating COVID nineteen, I think a lot of stuff there is already covered for. Funding, so looking at that, and didn't really come up with any ideas, um. One of the specific outlined uses in there is for premium pay or hazard pay for employees. I thought that was a, a very good option to use a small portion of our funding for. Um, and that was, I gave the, the project to an employee to come up with, uh, to see where their thoughts were as far as. You know, dividing it up and going from there, and if everybody should get a flat amount across the board, or how you. Separate and differ, differentiate the amounts people would or should potentially get. So that's what the employee came up with, I also had very similar ideas, um, to what the employee group came up with. So, that's on the table for you guys, um, some other ideas, Ben thinks he can. You know, find, tone his little writing to get the dispatch costs covered under this, and I really have doubts myself, but.
Um, I, I actually did talk to Motorola on that, our Motorola reps, and they did say that this does, this is covered. This covers that funding source, so they had a way to make it work, um, this with the infrastructure and cybersecurity update. All of that process that's allowable under this, so they did say that was allowable.
They did, but I would like.
But it came from, it came from, and that's, and that's fine, it came from Motorola as a company, and Motorola as a nationwide company, like disinformation, not just RRF. So, I mean, if Motorola is putting it out in the nationwide company, I imagine it's. I know they've done a lot of their research, too, but yeah, I have no problem trying to get pre-approval on it, but I think that'd be an easy way to fund. Um, our portion of what the switch over for dispatch is going to look like.
And if we can get that approved, there's already probably five counties that are wanting to talk to you about how we're gonna get that approved, so.
Yeah.
It's been a topic, this funding has been a topic, uh, among auditors across the state. Um, we've had different, um, chat sessions about it already, and how other counties are going to use it. Some of them are waiting to see what we're gonna do because of the ideas I've thrown out there that we had come up with. Part of it, we'll be talking about it at the auditor's convention at the end of June also. Um, a lot of them, they, I guess they're looking at me because I'm the auditor president of our association currently. So they want to know and wait and see what we did. Approved and passed, and the nine-one-one thing is.
Yeah, I, I, completely off topic, sorry, Charlie was texting me, he said he's unmuted on his end, he's joining my phone. Um, he tried to talk and you guys can't hear him, so he doesn't know if we're muted, or what.
We got a call in user.
Yeah, he said he's called in.
You guys hear me?
Jenny just said she can hear him on her end.
How much was that dispatch, you know, your dispatch?
Total dispatch switch over is going to be just under three hundred thousand, that's total, um, we're going to be on the hook for about twenty-five percent of that. So seventy, seventy, seventy-five hundred, yeah. Till twenty twenty-four.
You guys hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, great, if I may, if I may, if I may. Uh, on the liability insurance. There's a cap on what political subdivisions can be held accountable. And that two fifty per person. One million for occurrence, that's just on the liability side.
So per occurrence.
Sorry? What, what was that, Emily?
Right, that's per occurrence. So there's still the potential with our general liability and our business auto. To need more than that? No?
Right, but it's, so it's per occurrence, there could be five occurrences in a year and we still have that coverage, it's not a single payout for. One incident, it can be multiple incidents, but you guys were also talking about. Um, other coverage for our, and that's something that probably should be explored.
Well, we probably don't need to go to four million.
Is that what you're saying, Charlie?
I, I'm not suggesting anything, I just want to give you guys information to make a informed decision. I'm guessing that's why we went to two million, uh, a while back, but. Uh. I just know there's a ca, there's a cap, there's a, it's a statutory cap, two fifty, so if there's an accident involving, uh. One person and all employee is responsible, there's a two fifty cap for that one person, if there were. Five people in the vehicle, and they all were injured, it would be a million dollar cap. Per occurrence.
I like the motion I was for now.
And if it's not that expensive, I'd be good. I do know that there are. Litigation where, uh, plaintiffs' attorneys have, uh, have attempted to say that the insurance covered amount. Compared to the statutory cap, it's the insurance more. That has not ever gone through as far as I.
Would you be able to check around with some other counties and see where they're at for insurances?
Yep, I can probably get answers, but.
End of the meeting?
Next down there.
Okay. Okay, um, should we go back to this COVID money, or? Do we want to do anything with that now, or give it a little time, or what's your guys' thoughts?
What's the timeframe on that, what is that supposed to be?
Twenty twenty-four. Um, other thoughts on how to use it, you know, if we can get Ben, you know, Ben's idea gets approved. That's great, that's, I, I would recommend we use that, too, that will save taxpayer dollars in the long run, for us having to levy for that. Um. Other than that, there's, you know, you can do grants for community impact, small businesses, you know. Things like that for, for county.
Childcare.
You can do, one of the other things for public facilities is the ventilation. So the book is doing. Something in the building for that. So.
Do everything short of building a new courthouse.
Well, it sounds like we should, uh, come up with some ideas here in the next. Time here, just, well, I think we're a little too early to start decide, just pulling in money out today.
So if you guys are, sorry, if I may, if you guys are cool with it, I'll work with Emily and we'll try to figure out the Motorola thing and dispatch and try to get pre-approval on that, if that works for you.
That'd be good.
In the meantime.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else have any comments on that?
Well, I see Trail County's got like one million, so is that part of the dispatch money?
We're hoping.
We're splitting with them, two of them, or how does, how does that go?
So they get their own, so they're, that one and a half or whatever they get, that's their own.
Mm-hmm.
COVID funding, um, and then they got to decide what they're going to use it for as well, and I don't, I don't know, I haven't talked to Glender, any of the commissioner over there.
I have, several counties are looking at doing the, uh, premium pay or hazard pay, um, the. Glenda is very interested in the dispatch coverage, she is very hesitant, too, on getting it covered, because it, from basic reading of. The information given, it doesn't appear to qualify, but, you know, it's not saying it doesn't, they're still changing and, you know, evolving the, the. Recommendations and, and approvals of different things, I have a couple questions out to, um, the National Association of Counties. On whether certain things or areas would be allowable under it, they have weekly calls, uh, going over. How to use this money, what to use it for.
So they, they have, they have a timeframe of when they need that, kind of submitted, or just we'll have that down in three years, ready to roll?
We start putting for the, once I request the funding, which I haven't formally requested it yet. Right about at the submit, but, um, then we have to start doing quarterly reports to them updates. On how, where, what we're at, things like that. Um. You know, the schools are getting the same thing, I would imagine the cities are, Ryan, uh, the school put out a survey to all of the. Kids, families for the school here, on how you'd like to see it spent. Um. Same, same kind of ideas, um, as far as, you know, ventilation, proving the school or. Technology, you know, things related to COVID, and if we were to have another uprising cases or pandemic, how do. Move forward with that in the planning stages, um, and there, they also put in there their pay for their teachers. So it's on all levels being looked at, and.
So do you, you want to explain to me the spreadsheet exactly how this is kind of broke down, or is that just a?
I think the comments were on it, it's based off of which. The people that were here, the people that had more time and exposure and contact. Um, that were maybe some, you know, different ranges, whether you were able to work from home, um, down to. People who, you know, have very limited contact with outside. You know, people are potential to get COVID, and, um, just kind of the overall. How it affected them, that can be backdated back to last year, and so that's why that's in there, it's a max. Um, spending of twenty-five thousand per employee, um, I thought that was a bit high. So, they, they approve up to thirteen dollars, um, in our additional per employee for the hazard premium pay. Again, I thought that was a little much, so we didn't really reach out that, that far into it, but. you know, this, what they came up with allows for everybody to get something because it did impact everybody. Um, local governments are considered eligible for the premium pay.
Essential.
Essential workers, yes. So, you know, maybe the road department, they worked on their own, they are in the blade by themselves, they still work here and serviced the community and the public during COVID. Though their impact was very minimal, but they still would get something. Um, so those are the different ranges. And the explanations of, of, you know, who was working from home and who wasn't and she, obviously Sheriff's Office has a very large im- impact and worked with the public. Um, still have a pretty great exposure. We were here every day and we did do the cleaning also, and we did run to elections during it as well. Catherine and um, Jenny were, came in at the end of it in September.
I think if we're going to decide to give some of this for hazard pay and stuff like that, we need to sit down and really think about that. My opinion. It's a good breakdown though.
You guys want to take the month to look through this breakdown and we can talk about it in our July meetings?
Is this ongoing or from, from what to what?
Well, you can do it, you know, all the way back to, I think it's, I want to say March first is what we initially got, but I think I read that it went back farther to January. Now they'll allow you to back it. We didn't necessarily do it specifically off of a date and then hours. It was just more of a breakdown. Because if you go back, I mean, you can do it hourly, you count hours back from January of twenty twenty through the year and do an hourly rate per person, that becomes more.
So we don't know what other counties in the state are doing on this neither, right?
Everybody needs today, is a part of it. Um, like I said, we've, we've all done the, the national calls, we've all had chat sessions and talked about it amongst the audit group.
This is a general.
Struggles on finding good uses for it. So like I said, they're looking at the dispatch stuff and if we can get that approved and how the counties that are presenting employee hazard pay or premium pay go about it today as well. We've shared our spreadsheet on what we were proposing, others have as well.
So this total at the bottom was eighty-eight?
That's what the total would be.
Of all the stuff?
Of all of it, right, which is just about a quarter of our total funding. So there'd be three quarters left of the.
So then we would still have a hundred thousand left after this.
Right, and that's just in our first payment. The second payment would be the one eighty-three five by five.
Wow, right, yep.
Well, I think I agree with Richard. I mean, we should think about this just a little bit. Couple of some ideas and discuss it in July.
That's a big step here to decide what we're going to do with it.
It's a good problem to have.
Yeah, no kidding. Brian, you want to do the family, July, look through it this month and?
Yeah.
Seth?
I'm, I'm uh, I, I do want to say though that I do believe hazard pay does, if we can use that, I think we should use some of it for that. I really do.
Okay. We'll put that on the July agenda. Okay, we'll move on to exempt employees' hours.
Okay, exempt employees, I think that's what Ben's here for. Also, we had a department head meeting um, that it was brought up at also, and it's kind of a result of um, an employee's time card, we were going over from last month, from April, and that resulted in conversations with Richard regarding it as well. So Ben proposed these um, during the department head meeting um, and felt that it couldn't be put off till they have employee hands up um, meetings next month. So he's made some changes that he wants to propose to you guys. I, I guess. Do you want to help him talk or do you want to talk about?
Well, there's a so we have one employee that didn't, was, she was short hours. Um, every week she was short about one day, I believe, on her time card. Um, and then there was some issues with a person, say if you were to travel to, you know, to a certain destination for a meeting that you would not get reimbursed for that, and now I think that's been clarified. We've, we fixed that issue. Um, the time clock, so when you punch in, say if you punch in at seven forty-five, they do not get paid till eight o'clock. Um, that's when the time clock starts, right?
Correct.
Um, and then say if they have meetings after hours, they weren't getting paid for that either. Correct?
Their salary, salary, correct. The hourly employees get paid salary, exempt employees do not.
So we need to discuss the hours they're putting in, I guess, to make sure they're getting their full hours in for the week. We've kind of really watched over this before prior with hours to make sure that they were putting their time in, and now, you know, people have changed. The jobs have changed as well, as far as their duties and a lot of after hour stuff. Uh, there's quite a bit to talk about here. I don't know if we're going to be able to figure everything out in this meeting. Ben's got some changes he's got, I guess, Ben, if you want to talk about them?
Yeah, so um, first off, I apologize, I'm allergies, so that's why I sound like this. So if you hear me coughing or in my throat, that's what it's about. Um, first and foremost, I, I mean, when we talked about this on the department head meeting, this was mainly concerning the flexibility for department heads and for uh, exempt employees. So underneath our current policy manual, you know, we really feel that there's not a lot of that flexibility as far as time management. Um, currently, you know, if you read through these different, there's four different uh, places uh, where this kind of really specifically talks about it. Uh, the very first one there, I mean, you guys can read that, I'm not going to read it for you, but um, basically says that we have to be in the office from eight to four thirty every day, and then the second point, bullet point there is for the summer hours. Right? Um, I think the, the flexibility where that comes into play is that because of our duties, because things change, because stuff happens outside of the office, because we have to be outside of the office for whatever reason or another. Um, there, there's not, it, the current policy manual doesn't allow for that. So according to the policy manual, if you read it one hundred percent as written, it says that you must work a base of thirty-seven and a half and you have to be here from eight to four thirty every day. It doesn't allow for the, to do anything with your time if you have to teach your CPR class after hours, if you have to exercises, like I have a bunch of exercises coming up this summer that we have uh, happening. And, you know, according to this, no matter how much time we put in during that day, we still have to be in the office the next day. And so that conversation was brought up. Um, mainly the, the biggest thing that we're wanting to discuss here is the flexibility for exempt employees. So whatever that looks like, these are possible solutions. These are not be all end all solutions by any means. Um, what we're looking at is just for a little bit more flexibility in our own time management. And have that written in the policy manual, because right now there's nothing that states anything for exempt employees in the policy manual. That's the basic summary, I guess.
I will add too, I forgot to mention that we are having some issues with uh, our time clocks, with people uh, not punching in, responsibility of employee, uh, not taking care of their time cards for auditors to, so they can get paid. So uh, there's some things we need to work out with employees as well on that to make sure that they're doing their responsibility with the time.
You know how you take care of that? You don't pay them, and they'll learn real quick. This happened way back when, before. This has always been an issue. And if they don't get paid, they're going to learn real quick that they've got to be, we changed this policy ma- manual for everybody who wants something different. I mean, you see the time says right here what time they're supposed to be in the courthouse? That's when they're in the courthouse. All this extracurricular activity, they're doing, they don't need to do all of it. I don't care. That's just, I'm old school, but that's always the way it's been. They didn't punch in, you didn't get paid.
I, well, I agree. They need to punch in and maintain their time cards. But like, say if for, even the county nurse, say if she's uh, doing vaccination somewhere else and is not in the courthouse or, you know, has some meetings or doing training CPR, say after hours. Um, that's benefiting people in the courthouse or in the county.
It is.
I think that's very important, myself. Ben's stuff, training, you know, doing his trainings at night.
But back to this COVID deal, they got paid for that though.
A- and I, I should, maybe should clarify if I can, we're, we're not asking for more money by any means, that, that's not the point in this. We're asking for the ability and the flexibility for our time. Because right now, if you read the policy manual as written, the only thing in there about exempt employees is when, when it starts to talk about some employees are exempt from overtime rules. That's the only place where it even hints at exempt employees. So what we're talking about is, I, I guess you could relate it back to like comp time that we've had discussions on before. What we're asking is just for the flexibility in our time, that if we have to do those things at night or on the weekends or something comes up. Last night I had to be here because he dispatches wasn't working for hope. So I had to come in last night. It was a holiday. I still had to come in. It happens, right? I mean, wha- what we're asking for is just that ability to be able to say, okay, you came in for an hour last night because something happened. We're asking for that ability to be able to say, you don't need to come in an hour and, and uh, you can come in an hour later the next day and not have to worry about using an hour of time of personal time. That's what we're asking for.
I think the, I'll speak for myself as well as the girls at my office, the auditor's office, the frustration has come that you know, people aren't putting in their time. People aren't punching in, people aren't being responsible with their time cards. You know, we shouldn't be still going over times the middle of the following month. Um, exempt employees do get paid a much larger salary than the hourly employees because of that. They are department heads, they are exempt, you know, uh, I'm just using your hour as an example. Your situation is different. Every office is different. And, you know, as an exempt employee, we're not even having people put in thirty-seven and a half hours some weeks, let alone forty, let alone forty-five or fifty. That, you know, to me is very reasonable for exempt employees. You know, all of these guys, I think you guys are here every day, but we all take phone calls after hours. We all do things and, and to me, that's part of our job. Um, to go from there. At what point? You know, I'm not in disagreement. We tried the comp time um, with you and damaging the hours and it didn't work. And you agreed that it didn't work. You couldn't track the time properly. Um, we have people that can't track the time properly now. The policy manual's great, but we have people not following the policy manual now. My goal is to get a manual that people will follow. Um, it shouldn't be, you know, oh, at the auditor's office or employee is being mean to me or it's not fair. It is fair. There's policies made that should be followed. If we don't follow the, the policies that were set for all employees, then we shouldn't have a policy manual.
So, I mean, just I think if there's time issues with specific employees, it needs to be addressed with those specific employees. I don't think the policy manual should reflect a bad thing that happened with one employee and, because the policy manual's for everybody. To your point of not following the policy manual, let's change the policy manual. Let's change it. These are, like I said, these are some possible solutions that we came up with as department heads. As department heads, we're coming to you guys and saying that what we have right now isn't working, and Emily's agreeing with that. So let's change it. Let's adjust it. Let's do something with, specifically with the exempt employees and just for the flexibility of time. I agree that there are times that, you know, you take a phone call after hours, you do some work and, and you put in forty hours a week. I'm not saying that that's bad. I'm not saying that as exempt employees, we don't have that because we do. What I'm saying is, is that, you know, i- in the off chance that stuff happens, things come up, you have to work after hours, you have to work before hours. Stuff happens. Give us, right now, there's no flexibility. I'm saying that if I put in a sixteen hour day, like I had to Golden Lake last year, when we had that duration come through, I had to put in a sixteen, eighteen hour day, and I still had to be at work the next morning at eight AM. I didn't get home until four AM, and I still had to be at work at eight AM, according to our policy manual. There's no way to adjust that. That's the point.
This is Charlie. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
My, my biggest take from, from the department head meeting and, and uh, and then talking to some of the department that individually was, was the that, so for Ben's sample, we put in a sixteen hour day and, and if he wasn't at the courthouse and punched in the next morning on time, then he's charged, paid time off for that time he didn't come in during those hours at the court. The courthouse is supposed to open at important, you know. I think that's the biggest thing for Ben and Catherine, who is, those are really the only two that majorly make sense is that is that it worked ten, twelve hours, but if they aren't for the hours, the court hours, they're forced to take PTO at that time.
Charlie, that's not necessarily true.
Well, let me, maybe Ben can enlighten us, maybe Catherine's on tonight. Ben, that would happen?
I mean, it hasn't affected me. It directly affected Catherine recently, so I guess if she's on, it'd be her example.
So my big, I think my biggest deal is that um, we get different mixed messages. It's one day, okay, adjust your hours. But if you don't have the ability to do it in that day, I feel that you should be able to do it the next day or the following day. You should be able to take a couple of hours out because it doesn't always work to adjust your hours that day. So that, in that statement too, if the policy manual is not being followed when we're told to adjust our hours within that day, because it does say eight to four thirty.
Right, and yours? Catherine, I think your situation was different and we discussed that and we. Catherine, I think your situation was different and we discussed that and we resolved that. I thought, maybe not. The point is, is the policy manual does state. Catherine, would you mind coming up here?
She's in Bismarck.
Okay, it's getting very echoey.
So the problem I think is that it's not gonna be, can you hear me? Sorry. It it's not gonna be is infrequent coming up. It's gonna be very frequent with starting all of my clinic's backup and things like that is eight to four thirty doesn't work for people in the community. They're working their jobs Monday through Friday, eight to four thirty. And so to to br- to try to provide these services that are needed for public health, I have to do them after hours or on the weekend. And in the way it's set, it's penalizing me for that is my thoughts. You know, I I guess I feel like that I should be able to come in a couple hours late if I'm working till six or seven at night or one of these nights coming up at six to nine I'm working. So I I feel I should be able to adjust my hours, but one day you're able to adjust your hours and some days you aren't able to adjust your hours. It just depends on, you know.
I would agree. Um but currently, we don't have people coming, even when you come into the office, we don't have people coming in at eight o'clock. They come in eight fifteen, eight twenty, nine o'clock. We have people not taking the lunches, leaving early, all of that. So people, I'm not saying then my comments were not that the policy manual is not working. My comments were people are not following it. That is a difference.
I think I think we're I think we're mixing the issues up. One is people not punt coming in on time and punching in when they're supposed to. And the other is what Ben and Catherine are talking about, and that is that their jobs are requiring them to work more hours than uh or at least all of their hours, but not necessarily during the timeframe that the courthouse is open. Yet they're being required to take PTO when they're not punched in during courthouse hours, even though they're working their thirty seven for more hours. That's my understanding, but I
We have two different issues here. We have time cards that are not being followed and they're not responsible enough to do their time cards. And the other one is um the flexibility. That's the two issues we have. I mean, no matter what, if you are, if you're being, if we're saying flexible, come in a couple hours late because you worked late last name, you still need to maintain your uh time card. Uh we want that accounted, so you know, as of now, unless we change that, but as of now, we want that accounted for. Uh I agree, there should be some flexibility. Um I'm not opposing that, but we also want to make sure that you have your time in as well. We've been burned several times in the past and and it's trust. It's our biggest issue is trust because we've been burned so many times and so here we we want to be flexible right now. But at the same time, we're having people not tell that they can't fill in their time card. And so I mean, it's hard to say, yes, we'll be flexible right now and you can't even fill out your time card. We need the time cards filled out in order to pay you. That's that's kind of where we're at right now.
So with this this new system, they should be able to punch in.
You can punch in from your goal.
But is it only eight to four thirty?
I don't know. They they were in our little
They just like Catherine's away now. She could have went in at eight o'clock or whenever her meeting started and punched in. It it's an option.
And you can punch in from anywhere, I believe, right? Or not? Is it?
You can manually punch in anywhere, yes.
So like today now Catherine, you're in Bismarck. You can hear us. Did you punch in out now or manually or how did you do that?
I punched in at five fifty when I left the Finley courthouse.
Okay.
I I guess the the conversation we had to were, you know, I we're not opposed to punching in. That was just one of the suggestions I was here. Um we're not opposed to doing that, you know, I I think that's okay for all of us. I think we're all in agreement that that's okay with all of us. Um I I think we come back to the whole flexibility point and that if we're if we're putting in eighteen nineteen hour days, we should be able to fix that somewhere along the way.
Is that generally an exception though?
Yeah, but it's an exception. It seems to happen more and more and more for a lot more people. And that's that's where the we need to, we need to have something black, my opinion. We need to have something in black and white. We need to have an exception in black and white instead of, yes, this works, no, this doesn't work. Yes, this is okay. No, this isn't okay. That's my opinion. Because right now, we don't have that. Right now, it's it seems to be different for everybody. So I maybe maybe that's what it is. Maybe that's what it is right now, but we hear is this is the exception to the rule.
But basically, it's your office and Catherine's office that it's.
Specifically here right now, yeah. My other thing is is that when do we start giving these department heads their responsibility? And uh you know, we hired them to put them there to do their job, to be out and counting. That's what we want them doing. I don't want them sitting here at the courthouse from eight to four every day because to me, that just doesn't work. I need, if there's emergency for Ben, we want him running around figuring that out. Angie, another office that needs to be out with drawers.
Okay, we have nothing to do with Angie and Rouse.
So.
But I go as a sales, read hours too.
Yeah, and read, read too, same way. There's something that's going on, you gotta get, we want that done. Um not saying that it's say, yeah, that's it's a free for all, let's go out and um I got a good feeling that the office hours will, they'll be here. Um everybody's got a cell phone nowadays, so somebody comes in. Yeah, I mean, people can get ahold of me all the time, twenty four hours. So just my opinion on that.
So Catherine, say she in Bismarck, she goes at five fifty till six tonight. And she comes in at eleven tomorrow and then Wednesday such and such, Thursday such and such. Uh and her hours add up to what they're supposed to be. She gets paid for thirty seven and a half hours, right? So I I don't.
She's been putting in, you know, thirty five or forty five.
Right. So I don't understand why that's a problem where she would lose, if she would gain a couple hours one day, lose a couple the next day. Why aren't we just trusting her to get her job done?
I think there's more to the story for her, right? Discuss, or we can discuss it here.
Well, I think if they can log in anyplace, you know, shouldn't be an issue. Yeah, that should be all taken care of.
It isn't an issue.
I think we're, I think we're mixing up.
There's two different, we still got two different things we're talking about. So we we have the flexibility and the time cards. Punching in responsibilities. So it can, it's leading to both, it's it leads to both at the end because say we have an employee that's probably putting the time in that they're put, but they're not doing their time card. So it looks like they're not here, maybe. I mean, I could, that's one scenario.
That was in this day and age with all the technology, everybody's got a cell phone. Okay, Ben, if you work till eight o'clock last night, three extra hours or whatever, can't you text Emily and say, I won't be in until eleven o'clock tomorrow morning?
But according to our policy manual, that's not allowed. Right now, that's not allowed.
Have you ever gotten anything?
I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that that's never happened. I'm just saying, I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is is that currently under our policy manual, we're not allowed to do that. According to our policy.
Policy manual, he would have to be here at eight o'clock in the in the morning. That's what our policy manual.
Well, then let's change the policy manual so it accommodates these special department heads that have this problem. That's all there's to it. Move on.
So I'm just gonna, I I want to follow up and maybe put a little more to the picture. This is a public meeting and the public should be aware also um of conversations that were had. I had a conversation with Brandon and Richard. Um my office joined in as well. I was very caught off guard in the department head meeting by these um issues, which I thought we had issues resolved. Uh and the policy manual gives a time and place to make changes to the policy manual and we are not following that either at this point. Um there seems to be no backing at all of our policy manual whatsoever. If we bring up somebody's time or they don't have a time card in or they're not in an office and ask them to punch in, it becomes the auditor's office are the bad guys or the ables, whatever you want to call us, and we get called a lot, I'm sure. The point is, there is no enforcement of the policy manual currently, none. So why have a policy manual? We are asking for either enforcement, whatever the final policy manual changes be, either sticking to that policy manual and its enforcement or follow through of it, or we would like to see somebody else hired to do HR. That will take us out of the picture. We are no longer gonna be, you know, the bad guys because it's our job to go by the policy manual and follow the policy manual. And right now, that's what it's making us out to be is the bad guys of the courthouse because we are following the policy manual. So I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's right because it's our job and it's the right thing to do. So we had this conversation last week with those two and Brandon was part of it. He was here for the department head meeting. Um and and that's kind of where we're at with it.
I have a question, Ben. Are you hourly or are you monthly?
Monthly.
Okay.
I don't see right now, it you know, maybe you guys aren't putting your time in. I don't know. Your time down on your sheets or things. We don't have employees working forty hours, forty five hours or fifty hours. We don't have that. We have employees hovering around the thirty seven and a half mark currently. So there is, I think, some leeway that, yeah, you know, an hour or two here or there each week. You know, that might happen. That's part of the department head and this your salaries. And that's just my opinion.
Can I throw in something quick? This is Catherine. Um I think the thing is, is we have been adjusting our hours right now and I know it's frustrated the auditor's office that we have been doing that. And so Ben and I just want it clear and the rest of the department heads that we have the flexibility so that you guys don't feel like you have to enforce this policy manual that's not working for all the department heads. And then I think it would be a lot easier to follow.
I think this policy manual is always gonna be a working document. So it's it's never gonna be exactly the same. That apartment head meeting, that that is a good thing because that's where that's where these you guys sit down with everybody and you figure that out. To me, this is something they're asking for. Nobody at that meeting said, no, I, we do not want this. Well, let's bring it to the commission so we can discuss it. Um the issues are 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 real. That's that's a I mean, I I do get that as Richard talked back to the 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 trust side, but I'm also on the on the side of you guys are running your department. Um take care of it. That's kind of where I'm at. The job's getting done. We'll find out if it's not. So that that doesn't uh so, again, we're set up that, but.
So it goes back to two, two problems. Was our time card issue. It needs, that needs to be remedied. Um if we allow flexibility, which I'm okay with, but the time card responsibility, that's that's an employee responsibility that needs to be taken care of. If it's not taken care of, how do we know you're getting enough hours in? All I care is you get enough hours in and the job is getting done. That's my concern.
I think that those specific issues need to be addressed with those specific people.
I and I agree that the the one issue that we had with one person, I had not had time to talk to him yet. We had our little meeting on Thursday. I haven't talked to that person yet. So.
And that the the time needs to be tracked. We we need to know what's what's going on. It's it's no different to you know, than than anything else.
The the people in the county are watching all all of our employees, us, they're watching us all. And if they see you driving around at three o'clock in the afternoon and you're supposed to be at work, they call us, say, well, welcome there over at whatever's, you know, at a local business just hanging out or doing whatever. What are we gonna say? Well, I don't know what's going on. I mean, there's this, we do, there's things that we need to track some. I think there needs to be flexibility also. You can be flexible. Say if you put in extra time, your two jobs, your jobs and Catherine's jobs are unique. Say the auditor's office there, you probably don't need to leave the courthouse much, probably some meetings, but it's not as often as your two jobs. Uh Reed's job, his, he's working weekends, maybe falling snow in the winter time. That's just, you know, there's flexi- flexible time that we need to take care of and I don't know if we're gonna be able to sit down and say hammer, look right now, what we're gonna be able to do, but we need to figure out what we're gonna do.
I would like to see the Martin heads get back together again.
I think we should.
And get a solid, get a solid change of what you guys all can agree on, that they can look at.
It would probably be good, maybe we have a department head meeting and a couple commissioners get together. We can come up with some options to bring to our July meeting, maybe. But we do need to get this remedied.
So that's actually, we have a a meeting set up in July already. Um as part of the policy manual update that we do every year where first the employee group meets and goes over things they'd like to present as changes to the policy manual. And then we set a date with the commission, Charlie, me, the road department designate and an employee group designate to go over and discuss the changes that the employees would like to have to the manual. And then from there, we bring it to you guys at the August commission meeting to present this changes to the policy manual. We already have that process in place.
So when does that mean? When are, when in July?
Set up for July twenty first.
I I would like to see us have a meeting in June with the department heads and me and one other commissioner. The start just, the starter going, uh so it doesn't lag out. And then in the meantime, I would like to see the time cards, responsibility of employees start taking care of it. Make sure they're up to date. Don't, don't wait two weeks. Don't wait three weeks. Do it daily. Get your time cards corrected daily. I don't think that's too hard to ask for.
Would you clarify for the department head as well as in my office? Until the changes are made, what is expected of them?
Uh first, the time cards. They need to maintain their time cards for their current.
Daily.
Daily. That should be an easy task. As far as the flexibility, um what do you guys want to do as flexibility?
Probably completely forgetting the policy manual now.
That's that's.
That's where we're at right now.
That's what it is.
Employees read and sign and state that they agree to our manual to follow it. And it's not being followed. So from now till their next meeting.
That's what I, that's what I'm asking the board right now.
But the the reason I'm asking for clarification is even after the time card issue and discussing with you, you said that you didn't tell that person one way or another, that they could change and and do their hours that way, correct?
I told her that she could, if she worked later hours on the different stuff, that she should have been able to get adjust her hours. And I did tell her that if she's doing like a training somewhere afterwards, that should be accounted for, but
Right.
I didn't know the policy at the time. So.
Because we have, I'm just, we have the people that are saying, I punched in fifteen minutes before eight. I want credit. I want those fifteen minutes and I'm leaving fifteen minutes early.
No.
I saved nine minutes on my punching in and out for lunch, if they punch in and out for lunch. Um, we don't have employees taking lunches currently, and and they save their hours and laborly, adjust their hours that way. So that's why I'm asking for clarification is we currently have this going on regardless of whatever you said or the policy manual.
The other question was if they would get paid, if they would be driving to, say, Bismarck or to Fargo for meetings, and I and I told her, I said, I don't know. See why you wouldn't get paid?
I think we need to come up with a
We need to come up with a game plan and so how do we, until we have our game plan figured out, what are we gonna do then? Until we do.
What the manual says.
The other question is, is Ben and Catherine, do they have any meetings between now and the timeframe of July that you would be using your comp time?
Well, even Catherine today, she left at whatever, at six o'clock this morning.
Right.
So, I mean, it's already today. It's already happened.
I know, yeah.
Without looking at my calendar, I have six, I know for sure throughout this month.
I did ask the department heads at the meeting also to make sure that they're writing on their boards when they are on the office. You know, with COVID, it it was very easy to get out of that habit. We were closed. It wasn't an issue. Um, but we are back open to the public and it it hasn't, it's easy to forget. Like I said, it hasn't been followed, and I just asked them to please try to get back into that habit, because we do, it will never fail. When they're not here, we will get a call, you know, and or someone coming in, you know, needing whatever. You know, this could go many different ways. We have so many different, you know, like Ben, he's four different jobs. He's not a full-time one duty, you know, so that could that could change a lot. I mean.
I I don't think the question is that jobs have changed. Uh, this, you know, if the pandemic has changed Catherine's job as far as time wise, I mean, things have changed. We just need to, you know, come up with a new plan policy so that it can be followed and but what do we do until we get a plan figured out? That's that's our, that's the question right now, because we already have, say Catherine today is already her times are different. So what do what do you guys wanna do until the meantime?
Can I throw out there that I have several times this month that, you know, my hours aren't eight to four thirty, and that's with doing car seat clinics, all sorts of different things, things over the lunch hour. I have a lot of meetings over the noon hour. Um, just so, it's, it is hard to adjust in the eight to four thirty time range. Um, so it's just all over the place. The pandemic's not done yet.
If I, if I could, my suggestion would be to allow for the department, for exempt employees to have that flexibility, maintain the minimum of thirty-seven and a half hours a week, tracking the time as they should be doing already, but to allow that flexibility within that week to be able to adjust their time if they're over. If they have, if they are, can. There are some times where I won't be able to, and I will end up working forty-five, fifty hours a week. It happens. And I think, but allowing for that flexibility that, okay, if you need to adjust, you have the ability to adjust it.
I myself am okay with that, but if they need to maintain their time card to make sure it's there, there, because we have one person that, for example, last week that was short hours. And how do you, how do I go to bat for that person if they can't maintain their time card?
I understand.
I agree with what Ted said. They don't do the time card, they don't get paid. Simple as that.
That's the way.
That's. You're an adult. You're an adult. Grew up.
And I think we solve that issue, um, you know, with the, what you guys had said before of, of, that's one of the planning tasks is to make sure that's being followed a hundred percent, known if we or whatever.
So I think, yeah, I'd like to see some some, some kind of meeting here in June with the the heads and a couple commissioners. We can discuss it, but then.
A a policy manual meeting is what you're saying, right?
With the heads, we can discuss it to to write into a policy meeting. Uh, maybe some other examples or some more ideas so we can I mean, all you guys, this is pretty new to you. I mean, you, pretty tough to make a decision right now. Just kind of came down on Thursday after their their meeting. We spend the next month trying to figure out a game plan so we can get something figured out. Meantime, then let's, this next month, then let's use the trial period. See how the flexibility works. And then the time curves. I mean, if those time curves, if your times aren't filled in every day, yeah, that's, that's a responsibility, an employee responsibility. It needs to be done. That's my suggestion. What do you guys wanna do?
I agree.
Yep. That'll work. That'll.
Is there a reason half-hour lunches can't be taken?
I think it just depends on the day. I mean, I got a lot of female meetings over lunch hour, just because that's the timing that works for Denver. I I mean, it just depends.
Could you just adjust that?
It it, sometimes yes, sometimes no. It, again, it just depends on the day. It depends on what's happening.
And the time periods are like the timeline, you know, say it's eleven o'clock here and and noon somewhere else, whatever kind of meeting is it, it goes back to flexibility, but I don't wanna see where you're going. You wanna be done early today, so you work through lunch. That that isn't what we're, we need. We don't need that. That isn't, say, if you wanna go home early today, don't work through lunch. That isn't.
And I don't think that's what Ben and I, you know, and I don't know about anybody else, but I don't think that's what we're doing. We do take our lunch in the basement, you know, when we can, but if we have a noon meeting or, you know, sometimes we can't work around it, because I have home visits and my home visits are picking up. Um, I've got five more than I had last month right now. You know, so you just can't always work around it, which do try to, because we do wanna take a lunch.
Sometimes my lunch happens at two P M.
I I don't give any questioning. I have a question for Reed. When you're blowing snow in the winter time, do you stop for a half an hour for dinner? You work right through, don't you? Yeah. Okay. That's, that's all I wanted to know.
I mean, they'll stop or whatever. Have a sandwich whenever. I mean, they're not stopping right on that.
But they don't ever put down no lunch?
No.
And use that hour.
Because they just stop right at the beginning, get up to the half.
Right.
Okay, so are we gonna move ahead? That plan for the next month of the trial period, and also set it, let's set a meeting date today. That way, something gets done. Is there a certain time during the week that works better for most heads? Do you have a?
Clearly impossible to get them all together.
I really don't know, honestly. Next Wednesday, the ninth, Wednesday, the sixteenth. I think Wednesday's gonna be a little bit better.
So can we shoot for Wednesday, June sixteenth? Say, uh, one P M? Does that work?
Two P M or whatever?
One P M? And maybe Emily could send out a email, so we're all in that email, and then we can all respond to it if our, as far as our schedules, make sure it all jives with everybody's. Brandon, do you wanna be the other commissioner?
Again, yep.
We'll report back to the other commissioners how the meeting goes.
Thank you for your time.
Just, I wanna, just everybody, please do your time cards. Tell, that's a responsibility. Please take care of that. As far as, you know, the auditor just having to chase down the time period, I mean, that's, that's a full-time job for them to go back and ask them what, you know, did you work this day? Did you not work this day? They don't need, they don't have time to chase down times. So I guess I had asked you to check some things, maybe while punching in, and maybe we can discuss that later on. Are you the one that looks at that once a time? Can you, can you report to me? All right, um, we'll move on to next.
Here.
Um, health insurance.
Can you find it?
For insurance premiums, I just wanted to pay you guys.
That I get in, interrupter, I've got something I gotta get to.
Okay.
If I could just, if if I don't have to do that, I can do it next month with my head department.
Uh, go ahead.
I have nothing much to say. And they were right. We've been averaging around fifteen miles a month through veterans. The new van, which we got in July, last July, we've already got over twenty thousand miles. Not. My phone rang twenty-four seven.
It's, it's going well.
Yeah, yeah.
That is, I'd like to hear that.
Yeah. Yeah. They called me on my cell phone.
Good. Good.
The reason I gotta go is like Saturday, I was taking, going to do grade. My pickup is halfway between the Canton and Gray City. Well, I'm sitting in Gray City right now. Now I gotta go get it.
The other vans, what are they at for mileage?
Uh, the new one has got about twenty-two thousand. The old N D one has got about thirty-four thousand.
Okay.
So we're fine for a while.
Well, I'd like to get rid of the N D one, but that's
Yeah.
That's it. That's a piece of work.
Gabe.
Okay.
We're, uh, they're on the set.
Good.
You know, I got two, I have two, Dave, Roger, I had Meyer and Roger and Steve. No problem with them.
Yeah. Good.
Okay, very good.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
So the water board I see is down here now. Do we want to?
Insert two.
Insert two?
I see Mike's here too.
Well, the water board is probably the quickest, huh? Get them out of here.
Well, Kim is supposed to be at nine o'clock.
Oh, it is, okay. Uh, Kim, please. Any else?
Yeah.
Okay, wait.
Well, thanks. Good morning. Morning.
Morning, Kim.
Good morning. I'm here just to provide an update today, to provide a little bit of information about what has been happening over the last couple months in at Agassi Valley Human Service Zone. Um, the handout I provided is is a staff overview. We thought it might be helpful to have a picture directory of the different team members that serve throughout our service area. So just to kind of walk you through briefly, um, through this handout, of course, you know myself, um, just going down the left side of the first page, we have Alicia Kim. Alicia is our administrative assistant, so she is the individual that does all our accounts payable, accounts receivable, payroll, time record reconciliation, all our fiscal operations and such. She's also the friendly voice that answers the phone. And so, um, and so she answers the phone for both offices, because we have a unified phone system. Um, the next three individuals listed are Kristen Lee, Kelly Archambault, and Sarah Mack. They are our eligibility workers, so together they serve the economic assistance.
Can you pull that door shut, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, together they serve the economic assistance caseload for, um, the zone, and they work as a team. They all three serve cases in both Trail and Steel Counties. Their their caseloads are integrated. I'm going to the top right-hand corner of the first page. We have Beth Morale. Beth is our Children and Family Services Supervisor. So she oversees our Child Protection Unit and Foster Care and In-Home Division. And, um, her team consists of Brooke DeValle, who was our primary child protective services worker, Jackie Craylene, who does foster care and in-home, and Allison Clausen, who does foster care. So again, that team also serves, um, the entire, um, Agassi Valley Zone. And if you flip the page over, um, Tammy Sand is our direct team supervisor, so she works with the elderly and disabled, and she oversees our six direct care associates. They include Tammy Mooney, Kathy Mooney, Christie Parish, Tina Johnson, Jenny Linsec, and Marilyn Onderwood. And so those six individuals are providing direct services, um, to the elderly and disabled in their homes. And they all have the capacity to serve throughout the the service area. Um, we do have them kind of, um, Jenny and Tina primarily serve Steel Counties, and they do go over into Trail. Christie Parish also serves, um, that kind of the northern tier of our zone, um, including the Hatton area, and will also come over and cross the Steel County line. Um, Tammy Mooney, Kathy Mooney, and Marilyn Onderwood primarily are in Trail County, but they will, um, as needed, come over and serve, um, any citizen throughout the zone. Tammy Sand, like I mentioned, is their supervisor, um, and she, um, does care coordination for those individuals who qualify for our locally administered programs. And she partners with Jessica Nelson. Jessica was a prior Agassi Valley employee. But in January of twenty twenty, all, um, H C B S social workers transitioned to state employment, but she is housed in our zone. She serves individuals throughout um, Trail and Steel Counties. She's our designated person. So anyone participating in our state programs would work with Jessica in addition to who whoever is their service provider, who may or may not include our Agassi Valley team. So we just thought it might be helpful to have a picture directory to kind of give you a snapshot of of who all might be throughout our service area and providing service and how we work together as a team, um, in order to provide service, um, to the zone.
I like the handle. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. How's everything else going?
Everything's going, going well. Um, we're in the midst of our, um, budget build process, which is a very different process, um, since we formed Human Service Zones, because, um, our funding primarily comes from the state. We have, they have a very active role. So we've had at least twelve budget meetings with them, and so we hope to get finalization on what our twenty twenty-two budget will look like, uh, from the state's perspective. Hopefully by the end of this week, early next week. Um, and, um, they will also be advising us on indirect costs, what that will look like. That's contingent on another process. We hope to know that later this summer, once, um, um, the work of Abacus is done. And so that's where we are with that budget building process, but it makes a busy time. Um, other than that, we've been very staff safe, stable, um, our newest staff member of all these individuals would be Brooke DeValle, and. Who was our Child Protection Worker, and she joined us a year ago, um, and so everyone else has been with us anywhere from. I'm looking here, anywhere from probably twenty five years, to then the most recent hire being on that is probably three years. So, um, we've had some good longevity, which is, um, wonderful in our business, um, it, it, that helps us provide greater service.
Perfect, uh, does anybody have any questions for Kim? Yes, no, well, I appreciate the, the handout.
Absolutely.
Thanks for coming to our meeting, and it's kind of nice to have these meetings every month or every couple of months.
Absolutely, and I thought maybe moving forward, I might introduce, um, a couple of our supervisors, so you could meet them face to face at a future meeting, so you. Have an opportunity to focus maybe on one program area, and if you have any questions about that, we can offer that, so next time around, I might have another guest with me.
Okay, that's all great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
To the name, anyway.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, and, um, just so you know, I, if I may, Emily, I could send it out to you as well, if you wanted to share it with the, with the staff. Throughout the, for how, so if they see people in the area, they know that they're a partner and a team member and. Okay, I'll make sure you get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thanks, Kim.
Yeah, you can have it open.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody out there now?
Is Mike out there?
Oops.
Yeah.
That better not be broke. Mike around?
Where the water board, I guess.
Yeah, the water board was there, maybe Mike's not here yet.
Well, I saw him come in, then he went into auditor.
Most of.
Uh, maybe we can text the water board to come down.
Where's the water board out there, Reed?
In white was.
Water board. No, they must have left. The water board was there, but they must have went, went back upstairs.
Let's talk, I'll text the, the water board.
There comes. Oh, here he is. Morning, Mike.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Sure, I stepped downstairs for a minute. You're ready to roll.
Morning, Mike.
Couple things today, if you're ready to roll.
You're ready.
Uh, count road eleven. So I don't know if you guys have each had a little bit of an opportunity to think about the, uh, the culvert situation, what you guys wanted to do for. Culvert replacements before Millen overlay.
We, uh, we, I talked to a couple commissioners about the, the culverts, and, uh, I don't know if you guys saw his handout, what his estimated costs were. Uh, to me, after looking at him, I just. I, I really got a hard time not putting the culverts in before overlay.
Me done with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, some of these culverts are. Fifty, sixty years old, maybe.
Yep.
You know, it's just, and going up, look at him, I mean, one, you'd think, ah, maybe, but I mean, you can't see on the, there's, you know, some rocks on him, I mean, they maybe last for a while, but. I just, I would myself would rather.
Guy really has cut into the road.
Yeah.
And do it at a later date, I mean, that's the way I feel, but. It's.
I, I think some of the culverts the road department could put in. Um, you know, if, if there's some tools that they need, they need probably a laser, uh, so maybe. I thought maybe we could help them out a little bit, or somebody help them out from company. Uh, a packer, they're gonna need some packing equipment, and there's culverts that they can't put in, so. But some smaller ones, they just need some assistance on. Uh, I was gonna talk with Reed here, I guess, and see what his thoughts are and some of the scheduling to do. Um, both there, I guess.
And Mike, you estimated high, didn't you?
Hope so, but in the post COVID world, everything's crazy, so, I mean, your, your bid prices for your culverts are fixed, but beyond that, who knows? Things are just. It's been wild, so I hope so.
Well, I guess with your permission, you guys, I'd like to visit Reed this next week here and. Come up with a game plan, the ones he thinks he can do, and the ones he thinks he can't do. Report back.
Yeah, I agree. I think they should be replaced.
Oh, I think so. Cause about that time, then something would happen, and they'd go to heck or whatever, and. At least we have. Would be new, all at the same time, so.
Yep, certainly a lot of money. So, you know, that's, that's why it's taken some time to come to. Resolution, I guess, and part of the reason I need to know is that I need to start getting some of the paperwork in for the, uh, November bid letting for Millen overlay. And we need to know what we need to include in there for patching, and how we're gonna do that.
There are some local companies doing some, not local, I guess, but there's some local patchwork, repeating going to be done, so we have some opportunities with. Couple different companies, maybe we could talk to them too as well, patching in. Do you think we need to bid that out, or? With that patching done?
Well, it, it depends on, on how we're gonna proceed with the patching, so part of what we've talked about a little bit is the idea that it's nice to let these things settle a little bit. Uh, go through one freeze thaw, and then come back next year and do a final patch, so what I had suggested is, when you replace the culvert. In order to get the road back open, as you do each one, just fill it all the way to the top with gravel. Now, the pavement section, fill it up with gravel, then if you can have, once all the culverts are done, have someone come in and do just a thin patch. Over these this fall, in order to be able to get it through the winter. That way, you don't spend all your money on the thick pavement that ends up settling, and you may have to rip it out and fix it, so I thought just a thin patch, if this makes sense to Reed. Just to be able to have a nice and smooth for the snowplow, then we come in next spring as part of the Millen overlay project, and remove that thin patch. And put full thickness pavement back in as part of the Millen overlay project, so these would all become patches as part of that contract. That's what my thought was, now, if you guys are comfortable or confident that you want to go in and put full thickness pavement back in this fall. And just have them done in advance of the Millen overlay project next spring, that makes sense too. I do know that Knife River, that's doing the Highway thirty two through Finley here, they're anxious to start, they've been pushing the state really hard for contracts, because they want it to be done by the Fourth of July. So that's one paving contractor you wouldn't have opportunity with, they're gonna be down and out of here, um, I know Batuminas Paving is doing the Hope Street project. And Bill has said that, uh, uh, August, September is their timeframe, so you'd have another paving contractor that would be available August, September to do those patches to.
Which would probably work out well with us.
Should work out well with you guys, if you could get them on schedule and get them down.
I think there's some stuff being paid Cooperstown too.
Yeah.
I don't know who that is or.
There's, there's a few other miscellaneous projects around, but, yeah.
Well, let's get together, Reed, uh, figure out which ones that you think you can handle, and. We'll come up with a list and we'll report back.
So my estimate was based just that thin patch.
Yeah, I think that'd be the best idea myself.
And, that's a guess of it, uh, every contractor's gonna do a little different on how much base he wants to be able to step down and dig through some of these too, so. That's kind of an estimate on, uh, how much actual pavement you'd have to. So, so we will finish up the paperwork for the Millen overlay project, assuming essentially that. All of the culverts are gonna be replaced, and it's gonna have to be patched as part of that project next spring. Good. Uh. The other thing I wanted to ask in regards to the, uh. And I, I should finish, let, let you finish that culvert situation, but I'm assuming then that you'll bring that back for final approval at your, at your next meeting, so that'll be July. So there'll be some urgency to get rolling after that. On the Millen overlay project, the other thing I wanted to ask, um, COVID relief funds, Emily, back. In January, when you got the first information on that little bit of COVID relief funds that came out through that one bill, they had said at that point that they were gonna send you the money. And it was a little wide open on what you'd be able to use that for, my understanding is, is that as of. Yeah, late March, early April, they drew back on that, and they won't be sending you that money, because they've decided that they're gonna put a whole lot more restrictions on it. Is that what your understanding is too?
Oh, no, we haven't received.
Yeah, I don't think you will, because that's what they've been doing, is they've been holding on to it until you designate which project you put it on. It, it's a grand total of about fifty thousand dollars, they had about four and a half million dollars of COVID relief funds in January that they spread out to many counties, and your share was about fifty thousand, but. What we've been doing in a lot of other counties is we've been just adding it to, like, your paving project, just as a way to designate a federal aid road project. That that money could be dedicated to, just to make sure that you get it used.
Should we use that towards the pulver project?
No. No, it has to be on federal aid roads, but the biggest caveat is that it has to be on a project that's bid through the D O T. Their letter that came out in March was pretty specific on that, so it has to be a project that would be bid through the D O T, I mean, you could use it on a bridge project or, or whatever, but. It, it's gotta be that, so really that would be your option, it's either this paving project or your bridge project coming up.
You're talking County five, right?
No, County eleven.
Yeah.
The paving there, or the bridge, the bridge, not a.
No.
The bridge West on five, you would not, that would not qualify, because it's not an inspected bridge.
Oh, okay.
I'm talking about other bridges that you might do in the future here with federal funds.
That's that one that's gonna cost us.
But maybe you'd best to put that towards the paving project.
That's what I'm suggesting, just put it towards the paving project, then it's absorbed and used and done. And make sure that you don't end up letting it fall through the cracks and have it disappear. I mean, in a paving projects, it are expensive, it doesn't go very far in the paving project, but it's just another piece of money that you can add into that. So, that's okay with you guys, I will have the D O T change, so what they've been doing is they've been adding a C V D to the, uh, project number that we use on these projects. Just to get it through that, so Emily, you might see an email come through from the D O T that, uh, will take your approval.
Everybody's okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Um, just wanted to come back to your federal aid bridge program. Um, as we talked about last time, um. You have two bridges that are included for a bid date of twenty twenty, of February of twenty twenty two. Which, of course, is coming up surprisingly fast. So, kind of getting to, down to decision time on that, we're gonna run out of time to be able to get this project ready for that bid letting, um, if you guys want to proceed with that. What the D O T has been pushing, as I've said before, is they're pushing for you guys to try and do two bridges at a time, when you're doing box culverts, and I think both of these projects would be box culvert projects. Um. Just as, as a refresher for this, these are the bridges that you guys selected last winter, north of, uh, Highway two hundred, northeast of, of Finley. There's two different bridges, one in, uh, Finley Township, and one in Golden Lake Township, um, that aren't too far apart from each other, kind of on the same channel there.
Is that the one by Gerald Walzwick in the west, Joel Anderson farm? I think we talked more.
Or is that that mall one?
Well, Walzwick was the one we were talking about.
The Walzwick one I know, and I, I think it's the, the one with Joel Anderson's. Is it, is it one eleven dash oh eight?
I happen to print some maps, these maps, going past those rounds. You wanna see which two bridges it is? Out of all the bridges that we went through that looked like it would be possible to be eligible for federal aid, those are the two bridges that you guys landed on.
The ones you got circled, Mike.
Yeah.
That's the two we're talking about.
Yeah.
Those are the two that ended up on your federal aid sheet. So the reason I'm bringing it up today is that we're in June already, as of today, um. Typically, these projects, as they tell you at your over meetings every year, the preferred timeline to develop these projects is eighteen months, well, we're well past that. So if we're gonna get this bid, maybe not February, maybe even March, need to start on pretty quick. Um, the things that hang these kind of things up is getting, uh, an archaeological survey done, getting a biological survey done, wetlands, those kind of things, um. And then getting, I mean, even when you look at the environmental document that we write for these, you need an entire month just to send out letters and wait for responses from agencies. So these things take a lot of time.
Like at our last meeting, I have notes that we kind of discussed a hundred and eighty thousand would be our cost for both bridges, for both block culverts, our, our heart rate.
Oh, no, these, these, uh. Um, and let me double check, Brian, this is one bridge, one fourteen ten, right? And one twelve oh eight. Yeah, so what's on your program sheet, which we really hope this is high, but the total estimated cost of these two projects is about one point two million. So twenty percent of that. A little over twenty percent of that would be your cost. So it'd be two hundred and forty. Potentially.
I think you gave a little less of, the estimate last time, a little bit.
Yeah, and I, I, I couldn't find the program sheet to that particular task, um, if I remember correctly, but that's, that's what's on your program sheet, and box culverts is, as you know, Richard, I. Six hundred thousand dollars for a box culvert is kind of high, I really don't expect it to be that much.
You never know.
You just never know.
Yeah.
Um, but what, what the D O, like I said, with the D O T, why there's two of them on here is, is that they think that you save money, and they save money, the feds save money by trying to do two of these at the same time. One contractor to mobilize a couple of miles apart, um, you can do the environmental documents at the same time, try and save money, so I know it gets to be a bigger piece for you guys to bite off. Which probably means you do them, do these projects a little less often. So.
What did it cost us, Mike, on, uh, Tony Road seven for that box culvert? We put in a couple of years ago. That and that place rings two, wasn't it?
I think it was six, seven hundred, I can't remember.
Somewhere in there.
I was thinking it came in relatively inexpensive, I don't think I happened to grab that particular bid tab with me, so.
Oh, well, this, yeah, I wonder if, maybe it wasn't like four forty three.
I think it was in the four hundred range. Uh, these are gonna be just a little bit bigger than that one, brother. A little bit more. Man, that's been a couple of years ago already.
What do you want on, are we looking for a motion today to go ahead with these two projects?
We would need a motion for you guys to look at, uh, uh, preliminary engineering contract.
Show move.
Uh, so that would be an eighty twenty split, is how that would work for those two box culverts, so you're.
Yep, so it's eighty twenty on the construction cost and the construction engineering cost, the preliminary engineering cost is not, preliminary engineering is a hundred percent of you guys. So.
We have a motion made by Ted, do we have a second?
Second.
Second made by Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Guy just a little ahead of me there for minutes, but, uh, the, um, the contract is listed as not to exceed for seventy eight thousand five hundred.
Oh, for your.
To do the development of these, yes. Just wanted to make sure.
Yep. Second still good?
Yeah.
Motion carried.
Moving right along today. Those are the things I have, um, you know, as far as other funding sources and stuff, uh, we don't have enough on the rules yet for some of these other things that they're talking about, now there's. Twenty million to townships for the road and bridges, I don't know if that's gonna end up coming for you guys, I mean, there's, the D O T got a hundred million through legislative session for grants to counties. No rules on that yet, um, there's another sixty million in another bill, so there's a fair amount of transportation funding that's out there, we just don't know. Who's getting what and what the rules are gonna be yet, and we're hoping.
When can we use it?
Yeah. You, you won't be using it this year, I think, by the time they get the rules taken care of, my guess would be it's probably gonna be twenty. Twenty twenty two construction at the earliest for some of these things, so just kind of depends on what they are, if they funnel some of this stuff through the D O T, as you know, that takes more time. They funnel it directly to you. It's cool a little faster, so.
Things pay money everywhere these days, Tom.
They say there is, I haven't really seen much of it yet, so.
Okay, well, thank you, Mike, uh, do you have anything else to add, Reed?
Uh, motor grader is actually in, uh, little falls right now, and, uh. Fifty year. Uh, straight part of July. And fifty year, uh, straight part of July.
So, sounds good. Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Reed, what do you got as far as your, um, feeling cracks? How far are you along?
Uh, they're over on County Road twenty three right now. Uh, the part that we done the two model seventeen.
Yep.
And, uh, a lot of product. So they are halfway done with that. With that beam over there. But now the crap, the crap, we, we had to wait until they got big enough till they would take the crap.
Signature.
And now, so at least now we can get the product all the way through to the bottom. And they have to, and it settles down, and then they have to go through the can, you know, but it's gonna last because now it's tight that crap. It should stretch nice. But that's what you're doing now.
You're gonna go on County Road eighteen, west of Townier? You're not? Why not?
Get that for this year.
I've got a couple complaints on the road. So they were just wondering when you were gonna fill cracks on that.
Yeah, I was on that one on Saturday or Sunday. That was.
It needs to be over there to be milled and over there.
What font? Been a while on that.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that guy, people that I talked to said it was broken up asphalt all over the place and everything else, and I drove it last night and. There's a couple places where it needs to be patched and stuff before it does have broken asphalt on it and stuff, but you know.
It's, it's just getting worn out.
Yeah.
It really needs to be, that's why we talked about doing both of them. You know, eleven and eighteen both together, but it's impossible.
Not with the federal funds you have. You don't, you don't even quite have enough federal funds for eleven. You're actually far away headed.
Yeah.
Some of these other funding things, if they come through, if you've been. Bid it's not using federal funds that goes so much quicker, it's gonna maybe obstruct it next year. See, if some of these other funding sources, but at least this way you got your federal project in your federal.
We'll go and check the eighteen, Reed, where it was a couple patches.
It's around that curve there by Strong State.
Okay, well, thank you. We gotta move on here. We're a little behind here. Department quick, and then we have a ten o'clock, our county tax legalization meeting, I believe, right? So we need to kinda speed things up here a little bit. Good morning.
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 Well, uh, we're, we're here for our quarterly, um, water board update. I guess it's probably actually been almost happy here. Because I never would have been classed, you guys, uh, don't wanna take up too much of your time. Lyndon's gonna give a brief report, and next to us he'll give a brief report.
Would you mind sitting in front of the mic when you speak, though?
Go ahead, Mike.
You what?
Oh, do I need a Bible?
Pretty much. Do you feel like your?
Pressure's on.
It's on.
Okay, thanks for hosting us today, commissioners. Um, the water board's got a number of projects that are, are still pretty active. We'll start out with the first is Lake Tobiason. Um, we expect that construction to be complete this month. I know we've got some punchless items. We're installing a sign out there that acknowledges all the funding partners, which the commission is part of. And actually, that's part of the outdoor heritage fund requirement that we put up a, a sign there. So we're gonna put it right by the boat landing. Basically acknowledging everybody that, um, that took part in that project, which in the end is a very successful project. Took ten, fifteen years in the making to, to get those improvements completed, but we're about ninety five percent there, so it's pretty good news. Um, moving on, Steel County Drain eleven, that's, that's the washout or kinda some of the near washout area. That FEMA was waiting or waiting for us to make a decision on where we're gonna go with that for repair. Uh, that's where the docks place is, where we had to realign that road. Um, culvert was rested out. Uh, culvert was in, in dire shape there, so we're trying to figure out what we're gonna do there. FEMA unfortunately has told us that they're gonna cap the funding, um, so they're not gonna do what they would normally do on some of their. Mitigation or some of their repair options. So we're, we're sifting through some of that and we are going to, to start taking some soil samples out there. Make sure whatever repair option that we do doesn't fail again in five years. So we're gonna do our due diligence and, and hire a soil geotechnical engineer to, 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 to take a look at that. Um, one that's, we've kinda reported out on to some degree is the Elm River Dam, the dam number one there. We are very near completion of the actual study itself, where we analyzed reaching dams, um, increasing. Capacity through dams. That's your, your dam in your county, Elm, Elm River Dam number one. Then there's two other dams that are downstream of that. Uh, at this point, we, we're going to have a public meeting with the Elm River Joint Board on June fifteenth. Um, which is a Tuesday, basically two weeks from today. Um, and that'll be held in Hillsborough. Um, again, it is a joint board and that'll be at three P M. Um, notice will be probably posted, um, shortly, but that was, um, Trail County. Water Board was meeting this morning and they, they kinda went through what they thought would be a, a good date and network for the Water Board. On, on our end, so June fifteenth at three P M. There will be a virtual call in information if, if, um. If anybody's interested, otherwise, again, it will be in Hillsborough. And there basically we'll probably kinda present the findings of the study and whatever considerations at the joint board and, and. Um, we'll, we'll move forward with, don't expect any hard decisions that day, but at least here's the study results. Uh, what can we do? Start moving forward.
You'll send that out, the information?
Yeah, we'll get that probably to Tasha and then she can get it to Emily.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, Golden Lake, this is a new one that we, that we started kinda taking a look at in the last year. Um, as, as we all know, there's some water quality issues there. And so we've sent off cost share applications for a study to, to look at options to. See really what's happening with the lake system and, and some of the water quality issues that we've seen there. So we sent off a cost share application to the North Dakota State Water Commission, hoping for some cost share dollars there. And also sent off an application to the Red River Joint Water Resource District, which, um, the Water Board is, is a member of. So we, the Water Board this morning is going to, they did approve a, a study to, to take a look at the water quality sampling. Um, throughout the summer. So that will get started this month. So there'll be some, some, uh. Water quality experts coming in, getting samples on Beaver Creek, and then as it goes through Rush Lake. Through those channels and then even in obviously the, the lake and Golden Lake itself. So we'll be able to get, um, water quality samples probably once a month here throughout, throughout the rest of the year.
Say, like, in the interim, keep on just reminding them why we're doing that now that we're kind of acting part of it, with Bo Lake now.
Yeah. Yep, so the, the Water Board's involvement is this is, the, the Water Board owns the facility on Beaver Creek where the diversion structure is located. So the Park Board approached the Water Board to see if they basically be a partner. So at this point, though, the Water Board is kinda the, the funding partner at this point to, to get it through the Water Commission and through the Red River Joint. Um, kinda falls into a water project. We're, we're hoping that maybe we can build, even build in some retention component, and that's where we, we can leverage some of the Water Commission and Red River Joint dollars. And so Josh, that kinda what you were thinking?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
So, um, that, that, that process will get started with that study here this year on Golden Lake. Um, drain number two, that's that on the County Road five, I think it's five, just west of the Elm River Dam. Where that sluice gate and, and that little structure was supposed to be installed. Contractors been having a hard time getting a supplier to actually get that gate. So contractor is now reaching out to a different supplier. Um, we, we've had that with, with some of the sluice gate manufacturers, it's just a long lead time. So hopefully here in the next few months, we'll be able to report out that, uh, that is actually complete. Um, those are the projects that I have, and then Cassie's gonna jump in and, and provide an update on the budget, but if, if the board does. Um, commission does have any questions on those projects, answer those questions at this, at this time. Okay.
You're for good, thank you.
So the other issue we wanted to bring up with the commission today is, um, earlier, beginning of last month, the. Uh, board sent a letter to the commission about what our current mill levy has been. Um, right now. We're under the, uh, we're under what the North Dakota Central Code says is, is available to water resource districts for funding. Um, we've been at a three mil funding level since I, I think we've determined nineteen eighty nine or so. Um, we are requesting that the commission, um, consider an increase in our mill levy allotment here. Um, we did provide you with what we anticipate, um, expenses to be this year. We anticipate them to be about a hundred and forty. I think our mill levy right now is a hundred and twenty two. Um, so, um, you know, we, I don't know what that's gonna look like as far as what valuation is. Um, the reason for the request is we've been asked to kind of get involved in a number of projects where there isn't a. A standard funding source, Lake Tobiason's a prime example of that. Um, we thought we were pretty good, Stewart, and finally getting that project done, finding, um, creative resources. The J D A using some of their funding, um, using, uh, the Red River Joint. Um, the Heritage Fund and, and trying to come up with those and even getting local, uh, landowners' contribution to. Complete that project. I mean, that took us fifteen, twenty years to complete. Um, there's other things that we do get ourselves involved with. Uh, Golden Lake's other example, that's coming right out of our general fund at this point until we can find a funding source. I don't know what funding's gonna look like as far as state cost share. Lyndon really does get us involved. In finding creative ways to acquire that funding, but there isn't any guarantee of that. We also do a fair amount of work on, um, looking at drainage complaints. That's one of the other things that we are charged with. Investigating that does involve legal costs. It does involve engineering investigation as well. Um, and then, uh, we also are in charge of issuing permits for drain tile applications. Those have gone up. Pretty significantly in the last few years, the number that we've received per year and the investigation that goes along with that. State law says we can only charge a hundred and fifty. Engineering has to review those. I have to review them. I charge a flat fee of two fifty. So we're underwater by a hundred dollars, at least by me, and that doesn't include Lyndon's time. Um, so, so those are some of the reasons for the request, um, and, and for this commission to consider an increase, um, up to that four mil levy.
That's what you'd be looking at, the four mils?
Yes.
Not three, like twenty seven or twenty eight, is it?
It was thirty last year. We have equalization today, so we'll have a little bit better idea what a mill is gonna be worth after they go through the equalization process today.
Sure.
Um, we don't have any utilities yet from the state, so that will play a large part in it also. Um, as far as pipelines and water towers and whatnot, so guessing ballpark is thirty one.
Okay.
Is my rough estimate for now.
Sure. And so we just took a stab at what we thought of a hundred and forty, but.
Yeah, I mean, the dollar mill we put down is actually, we should just put four mils in it, not a physical dollar mill, but, but that's what our request is.
Yeah, I think I included you guys' letter in their budget packets, and they'll get those today. Budgets were due mid-May, so that we can hand them up today.
Okay.
To review.
Better drain, that drain eleven project, we don't know where we're gonna get money for that. It's gonna be expensive. It's gonna be essentially like doing one. You know, like Little Porch Church, many years ago that was.
Yeah, the issue with that is FEMA is basically telling us that we don't think there's gonna be much available for funding. It's a pretty expensive project and that assessment district is quite small. There's only twenty two hundred acres in it, so we don't really know. Where that's kinda, funding's gonna come from. We already have engineering costs associated with some of it right now. That's coming from our general fund at this point.
All right. Anything else? Sorry to rush you along. We're a little behind time here.
Figured. Thanks for having us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we need five. Uh, motion made by Ted for a five minute recess. That by that's all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, Jeff, for.
Thank you. I know. I'm sorry. Not going anywhere from here. Fuck you guys.
Where are you to the duration?
Have to be. How are you today?
I'm good. I'm really.
Do you plant stuff on here? Is it a garden there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought I seen, I'm like, oh, I wish I had a garden that big. Okay.
That's more or less the same calculation, but if you read the bottom line, the bottom two line, that's what I'm requesting.
Which one? Sorry.
Those two.
The, okay.
That's my request to the commission.
You request whatever you, that's your, that's your free will to come here.
And it's in the, it's documented in there.
Okay.
The first two pages are the restrictions by Golden Lake Township.
Okay.
No plumbing in the building. The last two is the, I went up to Lakota and talked to the tax director up there.
Uh, the Nelson County Stacy.
Yep.
Yep. She was one of the ones that was, I think, in the email that I forwarded. Yep.
And she gave me a copy of their deal. Um, they start out at thirty eight, thirty eight, six, seventy six. She gives them a sixty five percent reduction down to thirteen, five, thirty six. For a one acre lot.
How much did she say?
Sixty five percent reduction, just not for a non-developed lot.
For one acre was how much?
Uh, it comes down to thirteen, five, thirty six from thirty eight.
Okay. She just told me a little more. That's why I just wanted to double check.
Yeah.
To send email. She said the sixty five percent. It was just a little more.
Okay.
The value.
And then, so what I'm asking is gonna be fifty percent of that, cause I can't have sewer water in the, in stuffed lakes lots there. Chills that they can have sewer water, single family dwelling, they can't have the.
So what, let's see. Um, it goes, so the first dispute, if anybody comes for city, then the cities go first and then they'll go to township.
Yes.
And then if you get a, state your case and then.
Yep.
There's any time or if they have questions for me, then I will speak, but.
Yeah.
They're here to listen to what you have to say today. I just. It is warm. But I'm always warm, so. Nothing new there for me. You're cold.
Bad day to wear no pants. I thought it was gonna be nice. It's gonna snow outside.
Oh, I hope so. I like smell. Oh, I hope so. I like smell.
We have to switch the recess from the commission meeting into the township.
Hey, um.
What's the suggestion?
Ten, eleven. Go back to our county commission meeting and then recess to our county tax equalization meeting. Go ahead, Amy.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um. So we will begin our process with any city disputes, followed by any township disputes. This will um. If there's any time for the commission to have questions for me or anybody have questions for me, it'll just be as time allows. Um but this will be the time for the Steel County Commission to hear your dispute, Jeff, um and anybody else that does show up. Steel County Commission will discuss any individual adjustments that need to be made with accordance to NDCC fifty-seven dash twelve dash oh five. Then they will discuss any class assessment district adjustments in accordance with NDCC twelve dash fifty-seven dash twelve dash oh six. Decisions made by the County Board of Equalization are to be considered final in Steel County. Any disputes that require further action will be submitted to the State Board of Equalization. The state does not accept written testimony in lieu of hearsay testimony. If you wish to have your dispute heard at the State Board of Equalization, please contact North Dakota State Tax Commissioner. Um.
Does everybody have their information of Jeff Nelson's?
Um to start would be city disputes. Um whole city classification disputes. There was nothing on that. And there is nobody present from the city, any of the cities, um individual property owner disputes, cities only. Nobody is present to dispute the values that were disputed at city level. Would you like me to go over those values that the cities had disputed?
Did the city make changes to values?
Yes.
I think that if that, then they would review them also.
Okay.
Right?
Yep. Okay, so Finley Motors, Finley Motorsports, um Chad Aberley with the city actually had brought up the value, um did not agree that the value um as presented was a fair amount, fair value for that property. Um I had assessed that structure at five hundred fifty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. And um Chad Aberley made a motion to lower that value of the structure to four hundred and fifty thousand. Um. That was the only dispute from city level.
Did uh did Vanguard? They did?
Yep.
Okay. That was their value?
Yes.
Any comments about the Finley Motorsport building? What are your thoughts, Amy, on the, on their value?
I think what it was valued at, five hundred and fifty-two was fair for the newer building and it's equivalent to what all other um commercial properties are assessed at around here. So it is in line with the Vanguard values that were given out a few years ago. So my suggestion is to leave it, but. Carl did not dispute it. It was Chad Aberley.
So what's been done in the past? Business-wise, like looking at it from this side, I guess.
Um.
So do you recommend something?
We did maybe on some, but it, we haven't had a, a year. It hasn't been a year, like.
I don't think we have the situation where the cities change something like that.
No, not a city, maybe a township or, but. I'm putting blame on the COVID deal again that it's gotta be hard on them. You look at, when you drive by there in the morning, there's nothing. They're at their lot. I mean, there's gotta be a issue with them. I don't know. It's that way all over. Everybody's uh having money issues.
Just my, my thing with it is, is it's the reasoning, like for the Vanguard correct, was to get everybody up on a level playing field.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, um. Now we go start making exceptions to the rules all the time here and we're gonna start ending up, go back to where we're at.
You're right.
I'm, I'm just.
I.
Get out there. I, I don't, I don't agree. I, I, I'm just trying to look at this from fut- for future, looking into this too, if, you know, cause then run into a a mess there a little bit.
Everybody's gonna want changes.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
You know, if we don't.
If we start with one, we're gonna.
My question is, uh, did, what did, how did Chad come up with this figure?
Honestly, I think he just spit it out. Brian wasn't at the um city council meeting that night, but he kinda just came up with it. He didn't really, there's really no rhyme or reason.
He's a banker, though.
And I think he maybe tried comparing it to Finley Motors, but that building's a lot older than, and smaller, I would say, than Finley Motorsports. But.
I mean, we wanna promote growth in our city, in our cities too. I mean, I'm, I'm not.
Yeah.
Just asking, what do you guys think? I guess it's just you know, that, that Vanguard thing wasn't very cheap, but.
No, it wasn't. But it got everybody on the same.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Game plan, you know, everybody was the same and that's, that's what we needed to do. There was too much difference between.
Well, I think uh Motorsports has been selling everything they have there.
Yeah.
Well, that isn't this. I mean, that's part of it, but actually the value of the building is what we're looking at.
Yeah. We need to look at, so this, this here, then what about, okay, next year this business does that or or vice versa, and this comes up again, I guess, you know.
No.
Keep it kinda consistent.
I think if they had the vehicles there, they could sell them too. The inventory is done, you know.
But I think they just can't get them.
You know, even on, you know, tempers or whatever.
Yeah, all, all over you driving. And lots are small compared to what they, they were, because I don't think you can get that stuff.
They're not disputing the land.
So Amy recommends that they, do we leave it at the five fifty-two, eight forty-seven? Where do we go in here? Are we gonna? Do you guys wanna go with the cities, four hundred fifty thousand, or the five fifty-two, eight forty-seven? We need a motion on this or?
Would I abstain from this?
You could. You know, city level, but you weren't at the meeting.
Right.
Any opinions, Brian?
I do. And I, I'm gonna abstain from the vote, but I'll tell you this, that from this very start of the Vanguard thing and the cost of it, every vote I ever made was to equalize everybody. Like you said, everybody, the reason we did this was to have them equalize everybody. It came from somebody else, not somebody local.
Yeah.
And that was the reasoning. So I don't think it should have been changed. I don't know, I wasn't there, so I don't know the reasoning why. And if, if that falls into uh the place where Vanguard put it, I, I just, I don't know why it would have been changed. But I haven't talked to anybody to, to know why either, so.
How long ago did, did we do the Vanguard, that it came up to be equal? How many years ago?
Sixteen, five, sixteen.
Three or four, three or four years ago.
Finalizing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you guys signed it in fifteen or sixteen, the contract?
Yeah.
And this system does depreciate um by years also, so every year there's a new depreciation.
Any more discussion? We need a motion with either way to which way we're gonna go.
You're gonna be a bad, bad person one way or the other. I mean.
You have to look at that both ways.
Yeah, we, we do. I, I think if we change it for one, it's just gonna open up the door and then we're gonna lose it. What we, we wanted to equalize everything. That's the way we got it done, by using Vanguard. Um. I don't.
You did go back and check all your stuff and did you come up with the same assessment?
With Vanguard?
Yes.
Um with Finley Motors, yes. Finley Motorsports, yeah.
Looking for a motion to?
Looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to leave it as it is.
The five fifty-two, eight forty-seven?
Yep. I'll second it.
Motion made by Russell, second by Ted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, Brian?
I'll abstain being on the Finley Equalization Board.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion carried. Okay.
Okay, next up is Township. Um I will let Jeff go first. He is um here to dispute the new Bush Edition um lot values.
I think that's more.
There you go.
Is it same?
Nope, I got a couple here. You're different. Okay.
Let's get one to Amy, maybe.
I gave her one.
They're all the same, right?
Yep.
Just one thing, Jeff?
Yeah, there should be like five pages in it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you for your time this morning. Uh, the first page is some information just for you to look at. Items one through five are lines one through five are, or one through four are lots that are on the northwest corner of Golden Lake that are comparable to a mine that I am in question with. They aren't lakefront lots, so they're, don't have any lakefrontage. Uh, number five is also the same. That's located by the outlet at Golden Lake. The only difference there is it has a structure, but I'm only contending the land values, not any structures. But I just went to show that that one is valued at that price. The other two, seven and eight are lakefront ones that are vacant and they just, for comparison. Uh lot, line sixteen through twenty-five are the lots that we have added to Golden Lake Township in what's called Bush Edition. The first one showing the square footage, the second, the land value that we're, the proposal for us on each one. Each lot is approximately at a half acre. If you go to the bottom, and I apologize for the small writing, I didn't realize it till it was all printed. Uh, I went and talked to the Nel- Nelson County Tax Director at Lakota. And uh they value one-acre lots that are not locked lakeside. They're back off, behind the road or whatever, at thirty-eight, six, seven, six. That's a full acre. So if you take, and then they get a sixty-five percent reduction on that value, brings them at thirteen-five approximately. And if you look on uh pages two and three, that is the assessment district legal building requirements. The lots we have cannot have plumbing in the building, sewer and water, and cannot have single-family dwellings. And then uh, and then there's other building requirements to be followed. Pages four and five are the uh covenants for the development that would be non-lakeside, equivalent to my property in Nelson County. And the covenants were entered in two thousand nine. When I talked to her, she said that she worked with Ramsey and Benson County to come up with the dollar amounts. Uh Devil's Lake and then Stump Lake. Uh they can have single flat, family dwellings, sewer and water. And uh their value of thirty-eight uh is almost uh at one acre, what I'm getting valued at one-half acre. And if you take away the reduction that I, that have been put on my lots, they're well over the thirty-eight. I'm asking that you set the value of the lake lots that are not lakefrontage that match what Lakota and them do. They've been doing it for however many years. And they researched, she said it works real good, at thirty-eight, six seventy-six. And then with the deduction of sixty-five percent, I'm asking that that end number be reduced in half because I can't have sewer water or a single-family dwelling.
Any questions? Was that brought up, Jeff, by the Golden Lake Township on no water and sewer and no single-family dwelling?
That was a requirement for me to get it rezoned, yes.
That wasn't from us.
No, no, that is Golden Lake Township requirement for the rezoning and replating of that property.
So you guys, the Township Board passed the value to lot, the lots at eighteen, seven fifty? Or half acre?
Adjust the size.
Value the size.
Well, if the Township Board passed the value at eighteen, seven fifty, that's down from what it is right now. Right?
Yes, yeah.
Would you be happy with that?
No, not when Stump Lake has got a value of one acre at thirteen, five. And they want a half acre to be eighteen and at Stump Lake you can build a house. In that mine, you can only put like storage garages?
What was the Township Board's? Answer to?
Let's wait for Amy to come back in here, so. When you were all giving copies, Russell brought up. Uh, what, that what the town or the township did. Lower it and the next question to Russell you were just gonna ask was. Before I cut you off, sorry. Or were you gonna ask now, Russell?
What did the Township Board, how did they come to this value of this eighteen, seven fifty?
I think they kind of just wanted it. Are you able to speak on why the Township did it or?
Uh, I believe the Township, we did it. The lots, none of the lots have sold yet. So we thought, I guess, we thought the values were high back there. He's, he's only asking twenty-five thousand dollars per lot, I believe.
Yes.
And that, is that for every lot, even though some are bigger?
It doesn't matter on the size, they're twenty-five per lot.
Yeah, and so that was uh some of the reasoning we decided to lower the values to where we did. Um, and the other route, you know, some of the other reasons were, of course, no sewer water back there. Uh, the covenants we had on there, you know, we have pretty strict covenants back there. Uh, and it is off the lake, it's not on the lake.
Just the east side?
East side, okay. Yep, I don't know if you know where Jeff's shed is now, the green white shed on the east side?
Yeah.
Be right north of that, so there's, I think there's ten lots.
Ten lots.
Ten lots north. So we we actually met two times because we wanted to come up with, we tried to come up with different. Uh, values. We thought in the Township that given this value. That'd be more sellable to the colony level. Uh, we didn't wanna. Uh, do it so that it wouldn't be enough, that it wouldn't sell to you guys, but that was our, our intention. We think it's a fair price at the eighteen, seven fifty for a half acre lot from there. That was the Township's perspective.
So Jeff, why Stump Lake got this lot discounted sixty-five percent?
I I don't understand that. I, I have no idea why they discount lots as such. Uh, Gold, Golden Lake or Steel County. If I'm correct, uh, Amy said that if Vanguard said to appraise it five hundred dollars a foot, ninety foot lot, you're forty-five thousand, they take twenty off. So it's twenty-five thousand value. I don't understand why they do the reduction. Why don't you just start low and increase the taxes as it's developed that adds value to the property?
And then? Want to touch on that, Amy?
Well, the five hundred is a per front foot for the property that's across the road from the lake. That's just what was set when Vanguard came out. It was in the letter, it was written on with the county.
They figuring that as it is, was farmland?
Previously was farmland.
Yeah.
Changed it much along this path.
And the lakefront property is by uh same as our foot.
My comparable, um, that was the most equivalent to Steel Counties was Barnes County. Um, they use the exact same program, exact same, just everything that we do, how we value. And they have the lot that is sixty-five by seventy-five. And with no utilities, it gets a fifteen percent reduction. So the land value on that specific parcel is twenty-nine thousand five hundred. So I think our values are very close in comparisons with Barnes County. His lot are double the length as well, for two hundred and some, almost three hundred feet most of them.
Do you know if Nelson has been reimbursed or used Vanguard?
Um, Brian, I don't know. They use the, he talked to the same lady I did, has the same information that I was given, Stacy and Nelson. Nelson, Barnes and Ramsey all value the exact same.
So is that local assessors that do that?
In Barnes?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, it's their tax department.
They would also have different land values and sales ratio, yeah, to me, Gaver County is different.
Hyper debt.
So it's hard, I mean, you wanna use a comparison, but then you do it as other counties, but in the same hand. You can't always do that because of the state equalization numbers also.
In our county, there are no other comparisons to this new subdivision.
This is the first one since before Vanguard.
And that, that also is another reason why the Golden Lake Township, uh, given. Uh, those numbers for lots, just because of that.
You know, if you set the value lower. You're not getting out of the state's percentage because you don't have any percentage to match. You're increasing the value of your own property. So you're not gonna lose anything where you would lose. And miss the state valuation is going to be if. I develop and somebody else does and they're way low. Because you can prove right now with these three counties that are already using the numbers. As are on the bottom of the front sheet there from Nelson County. They're already using them and the state hasn't made them jack them up.
You plug in numbers for by chance? How that would affect your um commercial rates? It would make it go higher to the hundred percent.
It goes up. Have it for one percent, I don't remember off the top of my head.
I'm just trying to help with questions and I'll have to play out for you guys. So is that Amy's?
So this is. This would be if we changed it to twenty-five thousand, which was the, the first meeting we had talked about. Um, and that brought the value to. Percentage to ninety-eight.
From what?
It was ninety-seven, ninety-seven, three, I think it was. So one change, it's about a percentage.
And that seems quite a bit for ten lots to increase the county's commercial value one percent. That's a lot of increase on just ten lots.
So it's only the commercial?
Right, that's what I said, the commercial increase, so especially you look at. The commercial with the elevator and gas stations and Finley Motors and. All the different businesses that are processed as commercial, there's a tremendous amount of money there. And the value of those uh lots, you know, they're valued. It's just, it's fine.
So what do you feel they should be at, Jeff?
Under ten, I'll go to under ten. That is, if you go to Stump Lake, thirteen, five is an acre. That's roughly seven thousand for a half acre. So. You put the value anywhere from seven to ten for a half acre. I think that would be, I think it's fair to start there. Because you're not losing anything and you're not decreasing your numbers in the county. And you're above what the other counties are doing and the state is already looking at them and it's been two thousand nine when they did. Some Stump Lake, so state has seen it for well over ten years, maybe fifteen, twenty years. With Ramsey Benson towns.
Yep.
Your money.
Wallets. Um, so. If you want, if you're saying that they are, wants to valid below ten thousand, I mean, why? Are you asking twenty-five thousand for the lots if you are telling me that they're only worth ten thousand or less?
Because you never know what you're gonna sell them for and you don't set tax rates according to sales price. That is, you can't go there, that's not the way to do it. But you have a house and you're asking three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, next year should they adjust your price to your tax to that, they, you can't do that.
But we do go and readjust.
Once it's sold, once it's sold, yes, and I'm saying, mine are sold. If they sell for twenty-five thousand, I would go to the thirty, thirty-eight, six seventy-six minimum.
So you want me to tax when you order at twenty-five thousand or more?
Yeah.
But you only at ten.
I didn't pay twenty-five.
But I was made land.
It still is.
It's commercial.
Yeah, but you can commercial rate it, but it still doesn't have the value until it's sold.
Amy, do you want to remember the, the process? Moving forward on both ways, if they decide to change it or not change it, what?
The next level.
Go to state level and then continue to come to state level and just put that value there. And have your reasons why it needs to be lowered to.
Yeah.
D is in August, I don't think the time has been.
The flip.
Yeah, but it's in this mark at the.
The notice.
Three, thirty.
Yeah.
So then at that point, they would take all the information and hear Jeff.
Yep.
His side, his sheets, it would look bad over and review it, they'd also look at, you know, our county and our numbers. And how she got to that rate, um, and they make a decision, one way or the other, and that's the. You guys can certainly make a choice or a decision here also. If Jeff agrees or doesn't agree, regardless, regardless of what you guys do, he can still appeal, so.
Do you guys have any other questions for Jeff before you?
Those come from you. From the Township. So those were your recommendations.
So again, this puts us in that kind of position again to where. What Vanguard has put on for future developments out there also. You know, we'll have to, if we lower it now, we'll have to do it again.
And there are other, I mean, that we would need to look at because. They also have thought that the one lots that were excess. Um, on the west side of the lake were too low valued, so. There are more properties, the headline property he has listed on here is completely different than this property. It was for some reason listed as commercial in a commercial structure, it should have never been commercial, should have been residential. It does have sewer and. And electricity, I think it was, according to the notes from Vanguard when they assessed it. So something there was wrong, there are properties that need to be reassessed out there.
Hey now, Jeff, this one through four and five through eight, these are all properties on the west side?
Uh, one through four are on the northwest end. Five is on the north end and seven and eight are in the west edge, that new development where it used to be the slough and. Deep bank drop.
Well, Palmer's is Palmer's, right?
Yeah.
Their new Price and Shelly's is right next to it, right?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay.
But these are, are vacant lots that are beside the properties there, there is nothing on them.
The big, uh, the beer, uh, one, two, three, four are back lots of.
Oh, okay.
Uh, across my driveway.
Of Lofflin's there.
And I, I think at their Township meeting, we felt they were uh low. That they should be rechecked.
So Vanguard says five hundred on the front footage and then when it's developed, does it go down to one fifty? Is that what we're saying?
One fifty is excess land. If different owners purchase that land behind them. That becomes one parcel. Near side of the lake, there's really no option for that to become one parcel since there's that threshold there at all times. So it would stay, it would change to the residential. Value instead of commercial value, once there's developed and taught there.
And what's that per foot, do you remember?
So on these one through four, can Lofflin and them have water and sewer and stuff on them and?
Yeah.
Yeah. And they can have single families?
Uh, it actually, it's. I believe it's, it's a different track number, but it's actually just an addition of their lot. The way I look at it. They all own the lots behind them.
Mm-hmm, right, yeah.
And the road was taken out, so the road was put behind them.
Right.
Behind them? Okay.
The lots, once our purchase and change, do you see a five hundred different foot?
Uh, the Township, we had, I mean, we probably had three, four hours of discussions on this and. Our, this was our best. Suggestion. Without uh going back to the original amount to Jeff. We thought it would be the most fair.
Well, I can agree with what Brandon said too, you know, Vanguard set the. The stipulations of, you know, this and that on the footage and everything else and stuff and. Just like back to Finley Motors, you know, well.
Exactly. Just, I mean. That's where I run in because like I said, doing that Vanguard was, was a big undertaking.
But it equalized.
Absolutely, and we didn't need, we. Where, where it starts to get hairy is when we start readjusting stuff again for certain things.
Then we get off.
And then we get off and then it just snowballs, so then we're right back to. You know, this guy down here is paying. You know, whatever, two thousand dollars and that guy over there is paying thirty bucks a year.
Well, that's, that's why it's tough to compare to other counties that haven't used Vanguard.
Absolutely.
Because the reason we did it was for that reason. That somebody's, somebody's friend was doing the assessing and, you know, what if? What if Nelson County, the person who did the assessing, has a place at Stump Lake? Of course, they're gonna want it as low as they possibly can. That's why we brought somebody else in to do everything because we couldn't, we couldn't get it fair with the people that were doing it. So. I don't, the perfect thing is that they can go to Bismarck and. Try and get it changed, you know, whether we keep it the same or not, so.
I can see your point, Jeff, as far as, you know, you're half an acre to an acre.
I do too.
And stuff that way, you know, I can, you know, justify that and everything, but. You gotta kind of see our point too as far as, you know, our business with Vanguard and everything too, why we did it and.
And I, I understand that, but at some point in time, you don't have to keep doing. And I, I understand that, but at some point in time, you don't have to keep doing Vanguard. You have somebody here that has the numbers and can set it up, the commission can set the rate. This is a whole new deal. You haven't, well, they can tell you not to.
We can't, we can't.
But you gotta turn, turn and set the values other than what Vanguard says. You can do it from then on. Is what I'm saying. You don't have to keep Vanguard for the next sixty years.
No.
You can now, as a commission, you've got everybody leveled off. Don't go backwards. Don't drop down rates that you already have to keep you level. When something new comes in, you don't have a, uh, example, a prior example that's going on. Then look at what's out there and get it set. You don't have to use what somebody's recommend. That's what I'm saying is it. You guys can turn and set and go where you want. You're not reducing anybody else's.
Other comments, Jeff? Amy, your recommendation? Leave it at.
The thirty-two.
So what, what it was originally or what the township?
Cause it's more in comparison with, I mean, we use, obviously it's a different county, they do things different, but they do use the same system as us. Same exact.
Any questions to the commissioners, to Amy or Jeff? Now here's, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll be the bad one. If Amy, if that's what we think we need to leave it the same, as we did with Finland Motors. We leave it the same. That's my, make that motion.
Motion made by Ted, second.
I'll second it.
Second by Brandon, all in favor? Motion carried.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff. Hey, what's next, Amy? All good.
She is very nervous about equalization. It's very.
You did good.
It is.
That's not what I was looking for.
Looking for your notes, all these.
Did we have any more individual property owners?
Uh, there was, um, Danielle Bocky's and Jesse, or not Bocky, Danielle and Jesse Bremer. Um, they're. Or she was at equalization, she is now on the township board there, so, um. Her property was valued at one. True and full was one thirty-six, nine eighty-two. The township board and Danielle had requested to lower it. To, let's see, the structure to one oh eight.
Four sixteen?
Yeah, that, oh wait, four sixteen for just the structure. Um, and then the land value added on to that. And their comparable was, um, Lori and Arlen Fettings old house, um, to sell the town here. That structure was valued at one oh four, two fifty-one.
What was the name of the people you said bought people?
Jesse, Danielle, Bremer.
They bought the old, uh, Donna, not Donna, um, Robert and Judy Verwest property. Um, County Road eleven.
No, no, not, you said Bremer, okay, gotta keep going.
Was Arlen and Laurie's, was that one oh eight to?
One oh four is their value of the structure is one oh four, two fifty-one. And they want, um, Bremer's house at one oh eight, um, four sixteen.
How does that relate to your sales?
Uh, that would go. They, that didn't change really much at all. It was, the percentage stayed the same overall.
No.
Oh. I don't have their purchase price. Sorry. But it was valued at one forty-six, eight twenty-eight total. And that property was previously farm exempt as well. So the land value did change, also the classification. We had it all under egg land. It should have been residential land. So that did increase the land value as well.
What, what did you have a value deck? One forty-six or?
The true, true and full value. The original true and full value would be one forty-six, eight twenty-eight. And then with the new value that the township, the true and full would be one thirty-six, nine eighty-two.
Any questions for Amy? Any more comments? If not, I'm looking for a motion. So we're looking at a motion to leave, do whatever.
Is it just for this one or for all of them?
So they wanted a one thirty-six, Amy?
That would be the total turn full, yes. One thirty-six, nine eighty-two.
And you got it at one forty-eight.
One forty-six.
One forty-six, yep.
Cause Amy's valuation, the township lowered it to one thirty-six.
And what's your opinion?
Leave it with the Vanguard values.
So why don't you give them one example of it, so there's eleven, ten thousand dollar lowering it? Tell them the tax difference, what they would pay.
Uh, let's see, so for Bremer's, the difference would be, it's only a hundred and twenty-six, fifty-four.
The, the ten thousand dollar difference would be a hundred and twenty-six dollars. I just, just for a comparison, so you guys acknowledge.
That goes back to the Vanguard deal. I'll probably get insulting phone calls and, but. For a hundred and twenty-six dollars? I don't think we changed.
I think they thought by lowering that ten thousand would decrease the tax dollar amount a lot more.
And I mean, there's, there's, you use a process. There's just, it's not just making. Exactly. So, I mean, and it, as long as it's consistent between properties, that is, you know, and finding the best. Values and, and to compare with and, and whatever you have to do, I mean, that is, that is the assessor's job to do.
Since Donna Verwest deal, what is that? Is that, um, egg land or something that you got here or?
Um, there, for some reason, her, where her house is, is valued at egg land. I changed it to residential.
Well, that's, that's what it was there, okay, wasn't. Okay, we need a motion. One way or other guys here, what's?
I'll make a motion to leave it. I mean, the way we had it, uh, we can't be changing for everybody and.
Your motion is to leave it at the one forty-six, eight twenty-eight?
Yep.
Has made a motion at one forty-six, eight twenty-eight to leave it the same value. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Brian, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, who's the next one?
Uh, Brandon Hanson in Primrose Township showed up to equalization. He did state he did not attend any Vanguard meetings after, um, he had received the assessment. In the mail, um, the notice of increase he would have gotten in the mail. Um, he did not dispute anything at any point in time. He did come and request that his value, um, true and full be lowered to a hundred and ten thousand from one forty-six, one forty-three, nine twenty-five. And his reasoning is he just wanted it lowered back to where it was before Vanguard.
Any questions or comments?
Who did you say that was?
Brandon Hanson. Think is electrician possibly? I don't know.
It's under Brandon Martin, actually.
Ma- oh, Martin?
That's a different one.
Oh, I was gonna say, that's, I saw that. Gotta go slower, it's coming there.
I mean, he didn't come to anything to dispute prior. I think everything should be left.
It's right on the end of Primrose Township.
Not on the sheeting.
Not on the sheet.
It's not on.
He didn't get an increase this year. He just showed up. He never received.
He's just disputing the.
Vanguard.
Yeah.
From years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
The Vanguard valuation.
Sorry about that.
Any more discussion on Brandon's? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
Someone.
Or leave it?
Leave it.
Motion made by Brian, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brandon, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That's it for disputes. Countywide statistics. Currently, we are egg land. Value average per acre that the state had given us was one thousand, one hundred, five dollars and eighty-seven cents. Our current average, um, amount per acre is one thousand, thirty-one dollars and seventy cents. Which leaves us at ninety-three point three percent. Um, so we are well above the ninety percent tolerance. Which I don't know has happened for quite a long time. My suggestion on egg land is to either leave it and not do any increases this year or, um. Do like a half a percent percentage increase if. You would like to, you know, so we don't have to do a major increase possibly next year if they cut, raise that, um, average value. But I would recommend to just leave it this year.
Sorry, what was the egg land at?
Uh, state or county? Uh, one thousand, one hundred, five dollars and eighty-seven cents. One thousand, thirty-one dollars and seventy cents.
Percentage wise, egg land rolled out?
Ninety-three point three percent.
I'd leave it where it is.
Yeah, I think so.
Cause we did a three and a half percent increase last year, so that.
If Randy was here, he'd be telling us we have to leave it where it is.
Well, if it don't rain, it's gonna be tough. And it looks pretty dry out.
It looks really dry coming up this morning. I.
You drive all over the states and I've been out to mine it and Bismarck and, uh, Dills Lake.
It's tough, yeah, it is, it's dry.
Do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion to keep egg land at where it is.
Yeah, I'll second.
Motion made by Russell, seconded by Ted, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Um, commercial values from twenty twenty were. Twenty-six million, four hundred sixty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars. Um, and the twenty twenty value is thirty-one million, seven hundred seventy-three, five hundred and twenty-three dollars. Which, um, right now our tolerance level is ninety-seven point eight percent and this is with no changes. Added in, so this is just based off of all the values that I have made, so.
So the colony commercial value is ninety-seven point eight.
Correct. Um, residential. Twenty twenty values were sixty-six million, six fourteen, seven hundred twelve dollars. Twenty twenty-one values are sixty-eight million, two hundred thirty-seven, seven hundred seventy-seven dollars. And our, um, residential percentage is ninety-three point two percent. So we're sitting really well with all of our percentages within the county right now.
Do you think we gotta lower that commercial or not? How we compare with other counties in the state as far as commercial?
To me, that commercial fine.
We were at ninety-nine or a hundred last year, but this is also based off of the sales within, and we don't have very many good. Commercial sales within the county.
I'm gonna say this as a business owner account. Ninety-seven point eight percent is high in this county. If you're gonna invest in this county. That's a deterrent.
That's too high.
It's high. That's my own opinion.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
So that percentage is based off of all the sales and then all the increase and decreases I've done.
I think on the state tax website gives you all the, um, different counties' sales percentages ratios. For last year is on there, um, as of last equalization. They shouldn't update it after these county equalizations and get all the counties, um, their figures before state. Equalization, she can probably share that with you then, but I know right now on the tax, uh, commissioner's website is last year's information. If you guys wanted to look at that. Not now, but maybe later.
So you're saying we shouldn't do nothing now?
No, I'm just saying if you want to review other counties and where their percentages are at, it's there for you.
What do you feel, Richard, it should be down to like ninety? Uh, where egg land is, ninety-three point three and residential in that neighborhood or?
I don't know. I, I, I don't know what that will lower our tax base either, but. I mean, we're already at ninety-seven point eight. I'm just saying. You know, for, for growth in our county, let's not tax the heck out of somebody that wants to come to our county or grow. And, and eggs, I mean, they're the biggest. You know, employers here, I mean.
Well, we're under the average on egg land compared to the state.
I'm not saying to raise egg land, I'm not saying that at all, but I just.
No, I'm just comparing, you know.
Yeah. We're already getting at the, at the commercial, we're already getting that tax, but. I just, I think we're high. But I also know that our, our county needs all the tax dollars we can get as well.
Yeah.
How far is that down from last year? Ninety-nine something?
It's about two percent, a little lower, but. It's about two percent, a little lower, but that's just based off sales. And the increase and decrease, so it's gonna change every year.
It could be down two percent extra too, I suppose.
Normally I have to use the three-year sales, all three years, past year sales. Have to have fifteen of them total? For the abstract. Um, talking about residential values, um, when Ryan was here, we had kind of went through all the sales and whatnot, and it does look like rural properties are valued way too low and city properties are valued high. So I will be looking at the, this, this summer. When I have a little more time. So, just based off of sale prices.
Well, you go to buy a farmstead in the country and.
They're hot.
They're hot.
There's some that are selling for three hundred and some thousand that are valued at less than a hundred right now, so there's something there, and there's no personal property being sold with it. They're saying, so I don't think they need to be checked for sure. Any other questions on the values?
We need a motion to stay the same, go up, go down. Any motions?
Are those individually richer or are those single?
Uh, I suppose we have to do them individually. Yes, so I need a motion for commercial and a motion for the residential.
So if you were to lower that commercial side, how would you go about that? Just?
There has to be a certain percentage off of each parcel.
Well, that's commercial.
That'd be really the only way to do it, I would say.
You can see, uh, the, uh, value ranges, any disparity in those, you know, commercial businesses under one hundred thousand? One to two, yeah.
Can we leave that one until after the state figures?
No.
Oh, no. That's what we have to make a decision today.
So while I'm looking at the residential values of all these properties, I mean, just a suggestion, I can do that. The same with commercial. If you want to wait on it, that's up to you guys.
What's the commercial tolerance level?
We have to be above ninety percent on all of it. And the state could pick us for one of their counties that they will go over and look at as well. They pick a handful of counties that they look at the values and percentages to see if stuff needs to be changed.
If we're not above ninety?
That or if we're overt as well. They can just pick pretty much any county they want. Kind of do a random draw.
Well, I'll make a motion to leave the residential as it is.
Motion made by Russell to leave residential as it is, ninety-three point two percent. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brandon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Opposed?
No, no, I was gonna ask, that was at ninety-eight what?
Ninety-three point two percent of the residential. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
So we did not change anything, correct?
We did not.
Nothing's been changed. Okay, so then I have the.
Oh, we have commercial left. I'm looking for a motion for commercial, mom. Right now it's at ninety-seven point eight percent.
So past year's is at ninety-nine or a hundred, you say?
What does the auditor think?
I don't have an opinion on that.
Uh, is there any way for a quick figuring what uh, a percentage down would be? I know there.
I don't think there is.
Not a quick way.
Not a quick way.
What was the county's commercial appraisal value, you said?
The true and full value for twenty-twenty-one is thirty-one million, seven hundred seventy-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars. And the major increase there was Finley County, there's the elevator. The first half of their exemption went off this year, and that was almost four million, so. And then the second half goes on next year, which is a little over four million.
And the Finley City tip just started there's on now this year, so it's about two hundred, just over two hundred thousand. So that helps a little bit. Does the tax director have an opinions?
Don't you have anything? Leave values as they are, is my opinion.
So if we do move that number, you're gonna have to go back in and look at all, all, all commercial.
And then, um, if I'm correct, we would need to have another meeting before, for you guys to approve those values at that time. Before the end of the month, it would have to be done. So I need to have a special meeting for that.
I think it could probably be done in the day we have in the other meeting, but for you guys. Just throwing it out there. Or you could leave it.
So Amy, you said last year we were at ninety-eight percent or ninety-nine?
It was, I'm pretty sure it was ninety-nine. We were right at the almost hundred percent. But I think it's, I mean, mostly because of our sales are so low here. So those values aren't probably gonna change for a while. They're probably gonna stay really high within the next few years unless we get a lot of sales. Cause I'm using the same sales almost every year. I have to, to get my numbers in.
Had a few sales this year, but I don't know if they're very good.
There's not a lot of.
The city did, I should say.
Would it be the same without, uh, the elevators rise? Would it still be the ninety-seven point eight, or is that the reasoning?
I think it'd be higher. I'd have to look at that.
I'm just wondering if it's ninety-seven point eight because of the elevator stuff.
It'd be pretty close to the same, I would think, but I don't wanna.
Goes on your abstract, right?
It goes in the abstract and it figures that percentage out.
But it's going from exempt to non-exempt.
So it was three.
We do this yearly, correct?
Yes.
Check this out yearly. I'll make a motion to keep it the same, ninety-seven point eight percent.
I'll second it. We have a motion made by Brandon to keep it the same.
I will see though what it does change if.
Second by Ted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I do, sorry.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I do feel like Richard said we probably need to take a look at that.
What's your vote?
I don't need to vote.
You should vote.
It wasn't a tiebreaker.
No, but it's.
It'd be three to two. Why is that not how it works?
They needed the other day, the commissioner should always vote.
I thought I was a tiebreaker.
Took that commissioner role, um, webinar.
No, I didn't. No, I didn't. I had the other fires. I had the other fires to put out.
But I think we should, we should definitely see what we can do there.
For commercial properties, commercial.
Yes, cause that is, I mean, it is quite a bit higher than egg land and residential, which there, it's all different. I get that, but, uh, we need to, not only with the Renaissance programs, things like that. I mean, there is tax breaks that everyone gets moving into town stuff, but we should look at that just a little bit. See what you come up with.
Do that. Um, currently we have twenty-seven total vet credits, um, this year. That taxable valuation for those properties is ninety-two thousand, nine hundred, twenty-nine dollars, and total credit given is seventy-four thousand, seven sixty-two. And then the county does get a portion of that back.
We do get it all.
That, all that back. And that comes the next, the following year, correct?
Following year.
After, okay, yep. And then we have, um, nineteen total home site credits this year, which that total valuation is forty-nine thousand, six thirty. Um, total credit given is thirty-six thousand, three hundred, eighteen dollars. And then I did send out forty notice of increases this year, um, and I think you guys did get all those in the email. So. Sales ratio and over, um, so approval of valuations that I had given, you guys did that already, and then, um, so I have the assessment abstract and supplement, supplementary abstract, um, that have to be submitted to the state with all of our values. Um, this includes increases and decreases, um, throughout the county. Um, I do need you guys to approve those. So this is leaving all the values as are, as they are right now. Look at them.
What, what do you sign in or on there?
It's the supplementary abstract and, um,
All the changes.
Assessment abstract. It's all the changes that I've made. And I just, I would need the chairman to sign them.
Would you guys like me to email you the sales ratio for the whole state last year?
Yep.
That your computers are all gonna be.
Do you wanna include me in it?
Yeah.
Where do you want me to sign?
Um, it should be on the ball. Wasn't he signing?
You signed.
Did I make that up?
You did.
I just wanted your signature. But you guys can look at it.
Okay.
Who knows? I'm making that up now.
What else do we got?
Okay, that's it for equalization.
Hey, does anybody have any other questions, comments, or equalization? If not, we'll adjourn from equalization, go back to our county commission meeting. It is eleven twenty-seven. All right, our county, uh, commission meeting, tax director, billing permits.
Yeah, um, I have a building permit from SMJ International, um, Midco. They're putting a new antenna up on, um, a structure. And it's in, I think it's Primrose Township. Um, Ben actually had received this and turned it in to me. He said that they're, they normally do not charge these businesses when they're not actually adding square footage. They're just adding a new antenna. So I would need you guys to, um, approve that permit.
Okay.
For the new antenna.
Does everything look correct?
Yep.
Motion.
Motion made by Brian. Do we have a second?
No, we'll.
Second by Russell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
I do need you to sign that. Um, let's see, what else I have?
Today's date?
First.
Two, one.
Um, office updates, um, is my other thing. I am now done with all my classes and for assessing, and I'm now a class one assessor, so I'm good.
Congratulations.
Good.
Very good.
Yeah, way to go.
Yeah. That's all that I have.
Okay. Thank you. And, uh, thank you for the meeting. Good job.
Thank you.
You did good.
Thanks, Amy.
Yeah. You want this stuff, Amy? Okay, uh, next we have emergency manager Ben Generator.
Morning, guys.
Morning.
Okay, um, so the generator, what I wanted to talk to you guys about was basically picking one. Um, we have the quotes for the eighty K and the four fifty K. Um, you guys had talked about wanting to kind of discuss a little bit and try to decide maybe later on on how big we were gonna go with it. Um, the grant that we have for it, that's approved, it's all signed. Uh, the MOU that we got back from the state, that's been signed by the state now. So basically we can act on this whenever we want at this point. Um, the only, I, I, wait a second, I should say that we can't act until I receive three quotes uh, per federal procurement guidelines. I have to receive a minimum of three. And then I also have to take the lowest. I can't pick and choose. Uh, so today, what I wanna talk about, uh, to kind of get this project started and, and maybe to fill you guys out and see where you guys are at with it. Um, is this a project that you guys wanna see completed this year? Or is it something that we wanna worry about?
Remind us again, what was the grant?
Grant was for, um, the total grant was sixty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. This grant covers eighty-five percent of the total cost. Um, so that covered cost is fifty-six thousand, five eighty, twenty-five. So we'll be responsible for, um, whatever's left on our own. Uh, it's a reimbursement grant, so we pay for the full thing and then we get that up to eighty-five percent back. But we only get that max eighty-five percent of fifty-six, five eighty dot two-five.
So no matter what we pick?
No matter what we pick, all we. No matter what we pick, all we get is that fifty six thousand some change back.
And how many, how many bids do you have right now?
I have two. So I have one from Hope Electric and I have one from North Star. Um, North Star gave me an updated bid and Hope was, uh, I talked to Nick last week. He was gonna work on it again, gave me an updated one.
Okay, let's not uh, let's not discuss the value or the amount.
No, that's fine. Um, I do have, I was gonna tell Russell, I just heard this morning that uh REI, thank you by the way, REI is coming today at two. To take a look at all that stuff. So if you want to be around for that, um, I just found out twenty minutes ago, so.
You're talking about the stuff on the generator right now, what we have?
No, no, he's gonna take a look at basically what we have already supplied. He's gonna be my third quote, hopefully. So he's gonna come in and take a look at the generator and see where everything is at and what he needs to vote for it, basically.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, we won't talk anymore numbers then until third quote and then.
Well, so the third quote will probably come at by the end of the month, um, because I have to take the minimum, no matter what. There's really nothing for you guys to approve at that point. So my, my point of wanting to talk to you guys today. Was to try and see if this was a decision you wanted to do this year, because if it was something you wanted to do this year, then we need to pick. Let's get started on it is my thing. If it's not, the grant goes until twenty twenty four. So if it's not, it's something you guys want to place, then there's no point in me getting a third quote at this point.
I'd like the third quote.
You would like to see the third quote first.
Yeah.
Regardless of anything.
Yes. Little discussion regarding the generator. Um, I wanna update everybody, update it, Russell, he's been here. A few days trying to um look at issues, but. There's that scheduled outage that Nordic had on that Saturday for the two hours they were planning. Um, we did have Reid come in uh before the outage and switch over the generator. Um, so we were running off of the generator and didn't have issues while they had their planned outage. Uh, Reid says everything went good. Um, in that switch over, what ended up happening, did I want to go over this? I feel like I've explained this many times, but um. What ended up happening is all of our computers and the IT stuff also run off of battery backups as another reserve that will run for Travis thought. An hour or so. Those ended up dying. The IT network stuff went down. Um, and was off and Ben noticed it because the.
E dispatches was down.
E dispatches were not working. He had to come in. He was trying to get it reset. The system was down. Travis came, he called Travis, Travis came and got it working. The error logs for the network showed that they lost power. So.
So evidently it's not powered. When a generator runs that doesn't power that stuff.
Correct.
That's pretty.
Not enough power.
Really knows what does or doesn't run off of the generator currently. And to me, that's, that's an issue.
That's huge.
So, um.
The E, that stuff is the, what is it called?
E dispatches.
Dispatch, that's what everybody uses pretty much.
Yep.
That's huge.
And that should be hooked up to a battery backup. No, and it's not. So we, we're gonna resolve that, right? And get that done. But I talked to Russell and we do have someone coming out this week. In the meantime, because. In my opinion, it's ben- beneficial to have somebody tell us what is and is not running off that generator when we start it up.
Yeah.
Um, finding out after the fact or if we have, God forsaken, an emergency. That was not the time to find out. In my opinion.
Oh, you're right.
You know, technically, the fridge or freezer is down and public health should be running off of it, but are we?
Oh, this is more, more of a good reason we'll be generating.
Which kind of brings up my point, uh, if you guys want to do it this year. And I need to know what size generator you want to go with. If you don't want to do it this year.
You don't know how big a generator we actually need.
But we have two quotes already from two very rapid sources.
That are.
But they're the same generator. They're both the same generator.
Size, size.
One is an eighty KW, one is a four hundred, four fifty KW.
Do you happen to have that?
I, I just have um Tyler's, I don't have the others upstairs. So I mean, I have the specs for the eighty K and the four fifty K upstairs in my computer and I can definitely send the specs out to you guys. Um, but that's, that's what we are asking for is the eighty K and the four fifty K. So the eighty K would cover the electrical, the four fifty would cover absolutely everything.
So when the company comes today. Ask them their opinion first before you tell them what size generators we need to run our everything.
Okay.
Don't tell them or every, or do you already?
Well, I did send him the specs already because he asked me what specs are we bidding, because you have to send him the specs.
But this will run the furnace?
The four fifty will run the heat, yes, and everything else.
And everything else.
Yeah, the eighty will run just the electrical. So that, again, it brings it back to.
Uh, actually not just electrical, because not everything is running.
Currently on the twenty KW that we have, no, but on the eighty KW have. That we can hope, uh, at some point, whatever generator we get, that would run everything. So that was, that, that when we first started this process, um, I talked to a few different companies and I had one come in. At a ninety KW and one come in at a sixty KW and they both, and then you guys said, no, we want apples to apples comparisons. So I went back and asked both of those companies, what exactly are we looking at? They did all the research on it. And they said, you know, you're looking at probably sixty KW minimum. We would recommend going up to at least an eighty to cover any additional stuff that's coming in. So when they did all the electrical. Mumble jumbo that I have no idea what the heck they're talking about, when they did all that stuff, they, that's what they came back and said. So that's where the eighty came into play and then the four fifty came in because we talked to them, okay, what would it take to cover just the electrical? What would it take to cover everything? So that's where the two differences are coming into play. So when we're looking at it, we're looking at cat. Generators, we're looking at a eighty KW and a four fifty KW. So again.
But it doesn't have to be a cat, because there's a other company coming today.
Correct. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be a cat. It can be anything. I just gave him the specs. I just gave him the specs for the eighty K. This in the four fifties of the specs we want. Um, so. Again, my question to you guys, I guess, would be is if this is something we want to do this year, then I'll proceed with getting that third quote, but if this is something that we're not gonna plan on doing this year. Then let's wait.
Part for us to answer that is we don't know where the prices are at yet. For the, the for those generators.
But we know one prep, one is gonna cost a lot more than the other.
We know that.
Four fifty is gonna cost a lot more than that.
We know.
I think, I think that's kind of what we need to. Navigate down is, is all right, are we gonna go a full meal deal? Or are we gonna go? Back the other way and and just power this place with a, with a quality generator? And, you know, if we're without heat for a while, that's gonna be a really bad deal, but. I, I also think it's gonna be a bad deal for the county too, because we're gonna be without power a lot of places.
For me to make a fair decision, I think I, I want to see the prices before.
So last, last time when we talked about this, we did have those two, we had Hope and um North Star and we looked at those prices and North Star was still low at sixty eight thousand. For the eighty K. And he was.
Four fifty.
The four fifty was, it was, they did, it was a hundred and sixty for everything. So it was sixty eight for the eighty K, a hundred and sixty for everything. So I mean, that, that's the range that you're looking at, even though higher. It, it's gonna go higher, no matter what we do, you know, so I mean, that, if that's what you're looking at, we're still above our total grant that we received. So we're still gonna have to pay something. We're still gonna be responsible for something. We've been a hundred, yeah.
At that point, I'd be interested in the bigger one.
I, well, don't, yeah, because if we're gonna do it, it depends on price, but. I would like the backup for the heat. Guaranteed that we'd have that if, and maybe it'll never happen with this hot water heat and stuff. Not be good.
I, I.
If it furrows up.
I would disagree just for the, there's inherent risk that you have to take, a- and I think there's inherent risk that you have to accept and obviously knowing that we can't solve every problem. By throwing money, obviously, I mean, we know that.
Yeah.
Um, I think there's inherent risk that you have to accept and I think that's one of the inherent risks that you would have to accept. Is that the one in a hundred year event that we have where the heat goes out for more than a day. Versus the one and two year event that we seem to have constantly and where the power goes out for extended period of time. And, and that's just my opinion, I mean.
I guess that's probably, you're right. We, I guess we've never had the problem. You know.
True.
We've had a problem, we've just never fixed the problem.
Right.
Yeah.
Big generator.
What?
Yeah. And one that doesn't, and that's the one that's automatic.
And that automatic switch over is the thing I need. Right, I don't need to see that.
So I guess coming back to it. Is this something that you guys want to do this year? Is this something that you want to wait on? To me, it's pointless to get another quote if we're gonna wait for another few years on it. I'll just worry about it then. But you're looking at minimum sixty eight thousand and it's just gonna go higher from there, depending on what you want to do.
I'd like a third quote myself.
Yeah.
I.
And the reason I would like the third quote is uh these guys that are coming today deal generators a lot.
Sure.
Way more than other two companies that bid it. Um. They do this day, day in, day out.
Sure.
And I uh, I take please need to go for them.
Right? What if they come in high, it doesn't matter at that point?
Then we know where we're at.
So, so you're saying wait till July? How much time do we need to get this running? Because I mean, how, how long have we been waiting on maybe the decision on this generator?
Longer. Many years, too long.
It truly depends.
Too, too long.
That's kind of the point that I, that I was, it's again, coming back to it. I want to know which way, which route you guys are actually wanting to go. Because if we want, a- and then what year are you planning on doing this in? Because if we want to do it now, then you know, these, these electricians and these folks, they're, they're kind of getting booked. And I don't know if there's gonna be a guarantee that.
But we don't even know if we get a generator.
I was gonna say, are you, are you even gonna find a generator nowadays?
That'd be the problem.
But I mean, is this something? Is this something that, you know, if we're gonna wait, the, the grant, the performance period allows us to have this finished up the end of April twenty twenty two. So we, or twenty twenty four, sorry. So we can wait if you guys want to. What's it hurt us to get the third quote? I guess nothing. I just want to know which direction you guys are going, because regardless, I have to take a little bit, no matter what. Right? So I mean, even if they come in, if they come in low, great, I have to take them. If, if they're not, I have to take a little bit, no matter what. But you need three anyways to. I still need three. So to me, we have to get a third goal.
Yeah. Long, you say you need three quotes? To get it, that's, we gotta have.
They're going is the third quote, maybe, you know, it's a much reasonable, much more reasonable to go with the larger generator. And not where they want to make that decision.
I want all our options out there so we know what we got. That's, I want to make the best decision. But I disagree with, you gotta use the lowest bid.
That's federal law, so I can't change.
Yeah, I know, but. You know, the guy that's coming today might be better fit for us. As long as they deal with it every day in and day out, that's, you know. Yeah, I, I can't change federal law. My hands are tied with the federal law. For the taxpayers of county, we didn't need a third bid.
I agree.
Yeah, we do.
That's all.
Even if they're higher.
How about our burn ban? I recommend keeping it where it's at. So you guys are working it?
They're burning all over. I could see smoke in the air this morning coming up here.
Yes.
Yesterday too. Yesterday too.
So do we need a motion to continue with what we got for the next month? Is that what we've been doing or we just leave it in place? We haven't, we haven't changed anything either, so.
We said we would address it every month. I don't know that it needs to be.
I don't think the motion will leave. But we would reveal it, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll leave it the same then.
Okay. The other thing was the emergency COVID declaration. I believe that's what that emergency declaration means. I would also recommend leaving that in place.
Hey, do you guys hear that? The COVID, they were gonna leave that for another month, the way it is.
I was just looking at the minutes here if we had the scenes that burned down or not, so.
We adjusted it last month. Um, but I know that when we talked about it, we were gonna just leave it, uh, discuss it every month. I guess I don't know specifically it was to. Motion or not.
Just need to be on there.
So the generator thing we want to discuss next month, is that we're talking after that third bid comes in, we can maybe make a solid. Path where we want to go with that?
Yeah, I think we need to make a decision.
Okay. I agree with that.
Quick lolly game. For the burn ban? I don't think, I don't remember if we made the motion. Oh. Yeah, I, we're doing the same thing with the COVID. I think we review it every month.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do you want to update on the longer months, if you know, the third generator from the makeup?
Oh, yeah, so I emailed Terry, uh, executive director and ACO and just asked him what he thought uh about the. P S apps, the console, the. Switching over for the console, the dispatch center consoles, uh, with the. Yeah, the treasury funding. Um, he said, basically it comes down to the loss of revenue calculation. Um, it, everything ties back into the loss of revenue calculation. So it wouldn't directly unless it was proven in the loss of revenue is kind of how I understand it. It could, it could indirectly, but not directly.
That it could be used as part of the broadband allowable section, that's okay. And Terry is saying that in that aspect felt that it cannot qualify in his opinion.
Right, it has to, everything ultimately ties back to that loss of revenue calculation.
Loss of revenue is a different qualification for that funding. If I can show and prove that we had a loss in revenue due to COVID. Um, for twenty twenty, then we can use that funding um for that purpose, which leaves a. Basically a referral of, of whatever needs the county has can be used. With that funding at that point. Um, like I said, I do have a couple of questions into them regarding. You know, how, how the formula figuring all of that out. You know, funding we already got for COVID, is that part of our revenue makeup or not, things like that? So that part is still out. Um.
The answer is it depends, basically, not, not directly.
Of revenue, um, but you know, that was my concern is under the broadband, it didn't qualify and we know that. Um, if we can get the loss of revenue, then that could be used for dispatch, radios, whatever.
Right.
Um, you know, it could be used to. Just that, make up for loss of revenue that county has. So. There's a point I did on that. You guys have the link, I sent that out to you, you've been uh read through the acceptable. Limits of using that funding. Uh, for, and it is very specific, except for the loss of revenue.
Which opens it up.
Which gives you. Under there, but again, you have to go back and be able to um substantiate and prove your loss. Or your use, whatever it is to.
Yeah.
So.
Makes it harder. Um, I do have one thing on a grant, uh. So my guys remember that off-road V highway grant that we talked about with sheriff's office getting a ranger? Remember that?
In the order?
It's in. So, um, how do you guys want to pay for it, I guess? There's two ways. We can get the state to. They will pay their eighty percent upfront directly to Finney Motors, or we pay it and they will reimburse us. It's honest to God up to you guys on how you want to do it. It's fine with me, I really don't care.
Be a timeline?
It, it takes them a few weeks to get it through their system.
Motors, okay with that?
I don't know. I haven't talked to anybody up there yet. I just found out this morning, last night.
Which is interesting.
Yesterday, or Friday afternoon, yeah.
I would. Haven't had it yet, so I suppose it'd be nice for the fourth of July.
Finley Days next week.
Yeah, it is.
I, I don't think Finley Motors would have a problem letting us take it off the lot, as far as I know, the payment's coming. I don't. If it comes from the state, it may be a little different coming from us. We may have something anyway, yeah.
That's really not the right way to do that for the Finley Motors.
I know, I'm just saying there's. If we approach. If we approached it, they, there would be options. I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't know.
Other option is we pay it and you pay us back?
Yeah, that takes about the same time, right? It, us paying, it goes faster to Finley Motors, I guess, but they're getting it.
How much hassle is that for us? Not really?
Well, if he was giving us the option, the option clearly the less paperwork and. Hands in a palm is better.
We still have our old ranger? They have our old one already?
Yeah, they're sold, I think, too.
Well, then I think we got.
Well, then. Yeah, then I'm okay with. No.
No.
Okay with the state ban.
How many miles around the old pickup?
Ranger.
Or the ring, oh, oh, the range?
Yeah, couple hundred miles or hours. We got thirty six hundred foot. Here's the bill of sale if you guys are curious.
That wasn't enough.
Thirty six hundred? No, cause I think they sold her for like six.
Yeah.
So.
I think the state pays Finley Motors. Yeah. I'll go for that.
Are we gonna use it? Are they gonna need it though?
I'm sure they will, but.
By Finley, by Finley Days?
I'm sure they will.
They got our ranger. Way early.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we can use it. That's, this is my thing.
It's not the county agents? Not anymore?
Not with this transition and the new one.
They're the ones that paid for the old one.
Basically, if we paid it, I think the total comes out to be like twenty thousand five twenty five or whatever that number says. Um, the date reimburses that nineteen and some change. So they reimburse the. Um, off the, the sale price, not the. When we're all said and done. That's what that is, yeah, twenty four. When, when it's all said and done, we're on the hunt for twelve hundred bucks.
So we, can we do that to get him, get it here and have him use it for Finley Days? Or do we want to wait and just have everybody wait and? What? I guess, thank you.
I think Finley Motors would let us.
I think it'd be good to have it.
I think Finley Motors would let us have it. As long as we, you know, traded the other one in early and they got their money and everything else and stuff.
I'm okay with that issue.
Stop and see what they say.
Yeah, I can do that. Soon as it comes off their lot, we'll have it insured, but.
Checks in the mail.
Yeah.
So I have the state pay, is what you're telling me? And they're talking about.
Yep.
Okay, okay.
And then get us about what we do.
Yeah.
Or your car.
That's like. Three percent on top, anything over a thousand bucks or something like that? Yeah. Yeah, cause Wayne checked into that and it. He was just gonna use the card for the whole thing and it won't be being like true. That he did. No. Yeah. Any questions for me?
That's it for Ben? All right, thank you, Ben.
Thanks for that.
Thanks, Ben.
Backwards to the top of your agenda, the insurance premiums and changes. In their sample health. Actually didn't have a certainly large increase in their. Yeah, which is great. We'll see the increase for the single and the family. Announced there, which is affecting K line first. Uh, we also are renewing our dental vision plan with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And there's. Surprisingly enough, their dental. Single plan went down as well as their family coverage. You don't see that very often.
No.
Really? So that was a great surprise. Vision stayed the same. For both single and family coverages. Uh, so I'll be sending out an email today to all the employees and you guys as well. Open enrollment for the dental vision. Coverages is the month of June. So you'll have the opportunity. If you'd like to make any changes to your coverage on that. Um, the health is open enrollment in the fall. Uh, the October, November timeframe that it normally is, so.
So we don't have to really do anything with the vision or.
Not, let's not want to make changes, no.
Doesn't work, don't fix it. It seems like it's working.
Great, uh. I guess. What's more I'm looking for? Great news to be able to budget. This early with. Amounts.
Yeah.
So, and they're not drastically changing. Like some intended stuff we do, so. It's good. Good news. Extension of the, I want just to update you guys on the. Hiring process for that part-time person. We do have currently two applicants. For the position. I believe it closes Friday. Uh, we do have at least the third, maybe a fourth that have inquired about the position itself, so. There is some interest there. And they told me to discuss. Probably if who wants to be. Is it gonna be you Ted? Since you're the. Portfolio holder to do interviews with them after that this month?
When?
Andrew's gone, she's been gone for. I think this week and last week, so she'll be back.
He's at camps or something.
Yeah, she's at camps.
She started walking up and down the stairs.
She did? I'm not sure you're gonna come back to the sixth or seventh or something like that.
On the day, but. Good news. We do have some people interested, so.
Well, where's the news?
You tell me when. And then I'll work, we'll work around that.
Sure.
Yeah.
Uh, Golden.
I find till the end of the month.
Golden Lake Police Lot for approval. Um. There we go. This is a transfer of the lease lot from Dawn and Diane Larson. They're transferring to a Derek and Megan Lewis. Got all the information, the requests written out, signatures from both parties on that. Five hundred dollar transfer fee.
That's how it goes, right?
Little update on your lease lots and the taxes, those were all paid, uh. Some sign. Is that how you say it? Sign? Corey and Cory sign?
Oh, yes, yeah.
They, they are getting them for some reason, but they were the last ones and we should have been. Uh, today by the end of it, so.
Great. Everything's good here?
Everything was good.
Do we need a motion for?
Show move.
Motion made by Ted, second made by Brandon, all in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed. Motion carried. There's someone here, I need to sign or not?
What is the limit on the P cards for everybody?
Varies.
It does vary.
By department.
Okay.
They have a daily limit. As well as a monthly. Uh, if they need to go over or they have a large purchase, they'll call them. Probably not, it takes them. Twenty seconds to change that and then. That's down. Sometimes have some large amounts sometimes.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah.
So, um, one thing that has come up too, I don't know if you guys wanna entertain the idea. This year or not of a summer outing for the employees. Um, you know, it's doomed already, so that'll be coming up quickly. Generally, it's always end of July or August.
So where do they want to go?
There's no real consensus. Carly had been taking kind of a poll of people had ideas or.
Didn't we go to Red Hawks game one time?
We did go to a Red Hawk.
That's right.
That was a lot of fun.
It was. Yeah, it was fun. It was quite a, quite a turnout for that.
There's been golfing, there's been the Red Hawks game, the Golden Lake. Um, barbecue out there. So.
And when are Finley Days? Is it their hundred and twenty fifth?
Next year.
Next year.
Next weekend. Not this one coming up, but following.
Go through the ball, they're being, you know.
Yeah. Did, did you get a poll from everybody where they want? I think that's a good idea that I do.
I think she's working on it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, it was fun. Do something.
Proceed too much with it unless get support of it, so.
Okay, what else we got?
Your. July meeting was six, does that? Work for everybody?
I won't be here. I, I know that already. I.
A whole week or?
Uh, I'm having eye surgery on the sixth. I, it was supposed to be on Wednesday and I don't know how it got. But anyway, I didn't change it, so. So it'll be.
Two things about also is that it is the budget time, so. We'll need to for sure review budget for the next meeting and then maybe make an additional meeting on top of that.
Yeah.
For the month.
Yep.
Um, of July, Brian. Your, your book.
I got mine.
I'll update your two books.
My two? My two?
Yours.
Oh.
Like you. It was Brandon's. Um. I guess you guys, um. Any other thoughts you want to change the lines or July is always the month with the fourth and. It being the first Tuesday, that could switch the option with people if they have plans, so. You guys want to leave it, change it?
Are we taking Monday off or Friday off or how are we working that?
Um.
Oh, you mean on fourth, the fourth of July?
Please go to Monday.
Monday. Okay.
Saturday holidays, fall to Friday, Sunday's fall to Monday.
Okay.
So. But.
I'm doing the six. It makes it kind of difficult having that day out before that, but.
Doesn't matter to me. I mean, it's the same as today.
If you guys don't care if I'm not here, that's. That was my goof up that I get it, so I mean, but. So it's, I'm, I'm fine with it if you guys are.
We thought those is done.
Okay, so we, we need a. Motion for approval bills yet?
So move.
Motion made by Ted, do we have a second?
Done yet.
I haven't finished going through them yet.
Actually, yeah, speaking of that, but I kept these clear.
So, yeah, Dina gave the quote for. What's your entire?
Yeah.
And then I guess we will see the electrical portion of a bid for that today.
That's bid? Or that's the bill?
That's, well, that's the quote.
I think that's the bill.
No, this is for the lake. This one was with the bills.
Oh, you're talking about the.
Look at the lake.
From Tyler.
Yeah.
Okay, yep.
So. She's wondering on that. As far as the floor cleaner, she was asking about that too, but that will be difficult to use until that only layers. Yes, so. You know, that might be able to wait a little bit on that.
Okay. Two bullets here, one from Home Depot for twelve fifty nine. That's a G White Laundry Center with.
Is that like a stackable?
I'm not sure. Uh, Fine City has a stacked laundry unit. Whirlpool for thirteen ninety nine.
Stackable would be the, I would have thought. Laundry center, when they say that, I'm like, it is stackable.
Put me down for Red Hawks for the summer thing.
Okay. Carly, did you have a deadline or anything on that? Just kind of winging it?
I did, yeah. I haven't checked in today, but as of last Thursday.
Yeah, all of them do it now. Six, five, are you ready?
Yep.
Okay.
No worse than today.
Right, that's what I said.
Reads, summer help all lined up and everything already?
Um, I guess Reed decided not to hire summer help.
Really?
Really, he didn't get nobody to apply.
Yeah.
Right, they ran it through the press and that. I told them to push Facebook, cause the younger kids are not reading with still.
Really?
Yeah, so. But at this point, we'll just do it ourselves and we'll go along. So.
Well, I was talking to Reed or Ben. And Phil County had. Five people or whatever and they only hired two, so they told them to come over here. To look for help and nobody came over here. So evidently they didn't want a job for that, so.
No. Well. Reed thinks they can handle what they got to do.
Yeah, they did it last year, but. I don't know, that's just what he said.
Those are the bill for, but this is, we have that approved already.
Can do, yeah, so just if anyone.
For the wash and dryer, it'd be nine hundred twenty bucks to do the wiring.
Nine twenty five? Ooh, that's cheaper.
Nine twenty one.
And that's a stop of stackable?
No, that's just for the electrical.
That's the electrical.
So nine twenty one and then. Twelve to fourteen hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's gonna profit roughly twenty three hundred dollars, twenty two, twenty three hundred bucks.
Any elevator updates?
No.
So we need to, uh. Accept one or the other?
Time?
Yeah.
You know.
I got a question on the bill.
Yes.
Um. I used the Golden Lake from Cal's ice service. Why are we paying?
Okay, it's trying to back Jake on this.
Yes. No. I'm gonna say, why are we buying ice and you reselling it or what?
He is buying ice and selling, reselling it, yes.
He reimburses us.
I just realized. But he did those changes out there. Tell we out there last week, the bathroom there. Now on the north side.
North side.
There, and that wall's. Out that.
Where the bathroom?
The bathrooms used to be.
Oh, really? He took the shower out, the, the outside walk-in shower. You know, that's gone, that's where the bathroom now.
With two stalls, which is good.
So the other bathroom is, what now that? The one closest to the kitchen?
Storage for him.
Okay.
Which you, I'm sure you really needed.
Yeah.
So you're looking for a. Motion to do what here?
Uh, to either say yes or no on a washer and dryer and electrical.
Any preferable on the washer and dryer?
I.
You gonna get one now?
Okay. I thought we wanted to stackable. We talked about.
That's what I thought too, when you had a dryer.
Both of them are?
Yeah.
Okay.
They want our stackable.
So one's a G and one's a whirlpool, then.
So is it gonna be in the basement then, by the refrigerator or where is it gonna be? Okay, I heard by where the refrigerator is in the break room and I also heard. Down behind basement, way in the basement on.
Well, that's.
Back in there.
Cause we're gonna have that door locked or that.
Well, the door's there, the key is hanging out of it, so right now it's not locked.
But that.
I put the key so it don't get locked.
It can't be in the basement. It can't be in the basement, just down, down back there.
Well, that's where they figured it'd be better for them down there because of the.
She's gonna need access to down there, we're gonna have her taking care of some bumps and. The, the piece and everything, so.
Because they thought also if it runs over or whatever, then it's down there on the basement, right, there's some pole and a go right in there. Do the sample, so they.
That makes sense.
As long as she has access, I want that to be down there, so.
Yep. So either one of them are. Would work. Just the preference of Brown, if you have preference.
So, or is there, you know, Fine City bring them all here, set it up, Home Depot does the same thing?
Don't look at me.
I don't.
You know, bring it, drag it down here and haul it down there?
I don't know what that, it's a pretty.
I miss chips.
The coast is pretty.
Taking it off. I'm almost sure they're not gonna run and do that anymore. Not nowadays, anything.
It would be nice.
No, I mean.
I agree.
Make a difference between one or the other.
Did they have an auction over there? Uh, when is that coming?
Apparently it's this week. Nobody's officially told me.
I saw it on Facebook.
Facebook.
You saw it on Facebook?
I saw it on Facebook, I was like, oh, I guess our auction's next week.
Well, what day next week?
Third.
Or the?
I heard it, I seen it on the third.
Really?
Today's, or tomorrow's the third. Or, or Thursday's the third.
Oh, yeah.
Two days.
Sorry, not tomorrow, Thursday.
Thursday, the third.
I, I was.
They have a lot of stuff? Richard, have you been over there?
I haven't been over there, I know what came up here, I saw, I saw the stuff on the list.
Yeah.
And that's on Facebook? Under the county?
Well, I shared it to the county, it just came up on her errands.
Oh, he's got the option, yeah.
Yeah. There's just communication.
Uh, okay, what are we doing here on the washer and dryer, are we at the table until we have more information, or are we gonna?
Let's get it done.
Okay, let's get it done, there's a motion, which one you pick, Brandon?
Oh. So we gotta go down and get it too, I suppose, that Home Depot or whatever can go the cheaper one.
You want the Home Depot one?
Yeah, let's go with the cheaper one.
Brandon, do you accept the Home Depot?
Yeah.
Price? I'll second it, and by Ted, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, so we're also gonna accept, getting that motion, is that to accept electrical as well?
Electrical too, yep.
Yeah? Except electrical from Tyler, please.
What if it's six months out?
Then we'll get it in six months.
Whether about the plumbing? Isn't that all done? Or do we have to have somebody?
Sure, we'll have to have somebody come and do that too. Well, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, that's another thing, where we can put it in the easiest spot to probably pull off some plumbing, you know?
That, you're right.
Drain, water.
You gotta run electricity there, I suppose.
Who's gonna be in charge of this, are you gonna be in charge of that, Russell?
Is it two twenty? I suppose.
Yeah, Russell?
Or Russell, no.
Thank you for that, Russell.
So I gotta go to Fargo and pick it up too?
You want to?
You know what?
My wife would like to.
Myself. Or, but, but if I'm, I will go get it myself.
We'll figure it out, we'll figure it out.
If, if, if Russell would go get it, whatever he's got, or pay the mileage.
We can get it, we'll go get it. I'll help you.
You guys will go for a road trip, that's not good.
All right, uh, did everybody look at the bills yet, or what's this?
Yep.
Okay, did everybody look at the bills?
Yes.
Okay, uh, looking for approval of bills.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Made the first.
Oh, you did, okay. Motion made by Ted, second?
I'll second.
Second by Brandon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Now we have the pressure.
I put that, I offered my computer away to them, but, yeah.
She updated us on, uh, CDs. Do we want to, we cannot change them, they're mature and we can't redo, may change by that time. Maturating, but.
I think they were on the last month, November and May. Matured or whatever, so.
Yeah.
Do you want, um, come to a meeting before the maturity dates, then you can review?
Have her send, have her send out when the, just email out when the maturity dates are.
I think she already did. A couple of months ago.
Yeah.
Just after, just after she gave us that presentation, I think she had something on there.
So I mean, us looking at that, we're, we're, we're gonna go back and look at the percentages and see if we can maybe. Long-term lock. And keep it on a rotation.
Yeah, because we have everything on a year right now, right? Is that what it is?
Or you could split some of that money up and some mature early and then long-term pull some out, I mean, that's. What kind of what we're looking at, I mean, not necessarily moving money from banks, just. Working in, in between with what we got with each bank.
That's what I would say, yep.
You know, trying to maximize that interest.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
You brought that book up, you're looking at that next week, or next month.
Can you tell you guys take, do you find yours home and review them a little bit?
Did you put my stuff in there?
Not yet.
Oh.
All right, ask you to review them a little bit and hopefully you do. And then we go through it, page five, page of July. And then maybe we schedule another meeting, because they will need to be approved. Um, for the preliminary, uh, tax notices at your August meeting, August. So. And then at that point, we'll set, uh, meeting date for September for the county budget period.
Okay. Got everything? Motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Motion made by Brandon, second?
Second.
Second by Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, I'll keep looking.